I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you all very much. I will turn to Scott for the couple of mayoral appointments we have here. Please.
Mayor Mangere appoints and requests a motion by the Board of Trustees to approve Guadalupe Vargas to be appointed to the position of student intern two in the tax receivers office at an hourly rate of $28 effective January 2, 2026 for the time period of January 2, 2026 through January 16, 2026.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Whereas the Southampton Village Volunteer Ambulance maintains a list of approved per diem paramedics which the ambulance chief can call upon to provide coverage when necessary. And whereas the salaries of the use of per diem have been provided for in the budget, and whereas the village has reviewed and evaluated the credentials of potential candidates for addition to those available and approved for per diem paramedic list. Now therefore be it resolved that Christian Weidach is approved for addition to the per diem paramedic list for Southampton Village Volunteer Ambulance, and that's effective immediately.
So I'll make the motion.
Second.
Discussion. So this individual was brought to me by Christopher Eppley, chief of the ambulance corps. And he had actually done some work for the Southampton Village Volunteer Ambulance previously. And now he's gone through additional training, and he is a full-fledged EMT, and he is ready to help the village when we need someone to fill in. As you know, there were two people that were removed from the list of possible EMTs because they no longer were available to us. So I had instructed the chief of the ambulance to try and find us a replacement, and so this was the first replacement that he was able to find. He said he may have some additional people in the future, but again, these are only paid on a per diem basis when the need arises. But we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Ryan Winter is not here yet. He says he's going to be five minutes late. So I think at this point then we'll go on to the public hearings. Do you want to do the first one, Eileen?
Sure. First one is, well, you want to take a vote to open it.
Oh, sorry. The motion to open the public hearing on local law, well, we don't have a number for it, of 2025, this is having to do, again, with workforce housing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay. So we did make a couple of changes since the last public hearing to the code. One of them is, both of them are in the definition, one is under the definition of workforce housing development. We just took the standards that were in the definition and moved them into the standard section, so we wouldn't have a standard in a definition, because then you wouldn't even get to the, if somebody went through the definition, you wouldn't even get to the presentation. So we just moved it into the standard section. We did change it to say that 50% of the units would have to be affordable or workforce housing. And it wouldn't just be 50% of the units, it would be 50% of the gross floor area of the entire complex that had to be. So you couldn't have a small studio, two small studios, and then two large apartments. It would have to be four equal units, two of them workforce, two of them market rate.
With the same square footage.
With the same square footage. So, and I think those are the only changes since the last public hearing that we had.
Okay. So then I'll open it for any comments on the workforce housing. Again, I think we're going to keep this open longer, but just curious whether anyone out there or anyone on the dais has any comments, again, on the proposed workforce housing in the office district of the village, primarily North Sea Road and Hampton Road. Anyone on Zoom? Okay, great. Thank you, Sage.
I don't think she wants to talk about this.
Did you, I don't think you wanted to talk about workforce housing, did you?
No, I do not.
Okay.
I mean, another time.
All right. No, no. So we're going to get to that just a little bit further in the, on the agenda. So if you don't mind, we'll have you come back in just a little bit, because this is the public hearing for workforce housing.
Ah.
All right. But stand by. We'll get to you when we get to the traffic. I know that's what you want to speak about. All right, Sage, anyone else for this? Obviously, you don't know until we bring them in.
No, I have no hands.
Okay.
So I would just say, remind people, or for those who didn't know, the planning commission held a fairly well-attended and fairly robust, I see Michelle in the audience, hearing on the topic of workforce housing on October 17th, so almost a month ago. And it was very good in terms of bringing out some of the practices and examples of what's happened elsewhere on the East End and neighboring communities. It was, I think, by design and for good reason, short on specific recommendations or ways to maybe further amend the law or other options to consider. I also see Nick Palumbo, who had a very interesting idea about an initiative out in Colorado, where they have a fund that actually pays people for existing homeowners who can stay in their homes to keep their homes as affordable housing, which limits the resale price of that house. It's voluntary, you get paid to come into that program, almost like you've sold an easement. I don't know if that's the right model for us, but I believe, without prolonging this too long, that we have some other options we can consider, and I know we're in some discussions to tease those out.
Yeah. So if anyone else wants to speak or not speak, then I'll just hold this open, this public hearing for the next meeting, which is December 11th. Am I right?
Mayor, are we having any off, you know, designating people who are intimately or more expertly involved with this to get together and discuss ideas such as the one as Trustee Coburn just mentioned, and any other ideas, some of the ideas that are brought up in the planning commission meeting? I don't think we can just have a meeting like this where nobody's really offering any suggestions and say, oh, well, the thing that we've presented is just great, let's go ahead and do it. I think we need some, I think we need a subcommittee to take a look at this and discuss what we've got and whether or not there are any other changes should be made to it. And I'm wondering if we have that capability to do that.
Well, the planning commission could work further on that. I know Rob is very interested, so maybe you guys could work together, maybe have another information session. We can certainly invite Roy, someone to come and speak to us at our work session specifically on this topic, if there's someone that we want to identify to have come speak to us.
Well, and we also do have Alex Wallach, the village planner, and the consultant, and Snoll, who has been involved in this.
He worked on the draft.
I'd certainly be happy to set up a meeting with them and inform you or invite you, Roy, if you wanted to be part of it, and maybe invite Michelle if you wanted to be part of it.
I just think this is the last sort of place in the village where we can actually maybe make a difference in this issue, and I really want to make sure we get it, we do the best possible job we can.
You know, it seems to me, obviously, the way the village is geographically, we're not going to have opportunities for high-density workforce housing. And I'm thinking of traffic, because that's all I think about, and, you know, which is, you know, it's a regional issue, and maybe we ought to expand our thinking beyond the borders of this village, because if our teachers and our nurses and our police officers can find housing in a locality close to us, that would help traffic, it would help a lot of things. Just a thought.
Yeah.
Well, the town recognizes that, and they do have a pretty robust initiative, so I'd also be happy to reach out to Dennis Scherer, who is involved.
I think it makes sense, yeah.
Yeah. I'm also pleased to see as we go forward, more changes that improve it, for example, the suggestion of the GFA, which will make sure that there's an equality between workforce housing and commercial, and, yes, just regular housing. And we're up to 50%, although I still believe in 100%.
But you can do 100% if you want to, or an applicant can do it.
Right, but you have competing interests in that, at that point. So I'd like to eliminate the competing interests and just be focused on workforce housing. But as we go forward, we'll see what other people think as well, and see if this progresses further. I'm very pleased to see how it's going.
Okay. All right. Well, then, again, I'll close this, not close this, leave it open, but turn it over till December 11th, I think, is the next meeting of the board.
Adjourn it to December.
Adjourn it to December 11th, Thursday. But now I see that Ryan Winter has arrived.
Do we need to take a motion and officially close it?
Yeah, we should take a motion.
But we're not closing it, we're just adjourned.
Yeah, but you're adjourned the hearing.
Okay. Make a motion to adjourn to December 11th.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, now, Ryan, you get to come forward and fill us in on traffic, please, as our traffic consultant, VHB Ryan Winter.
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees. Sorry for my tardiness this evening. Just wanted to follow up on what we talked about a little bit at the work session with regard to the Hill Street pilot program that was completed in September, and kind of go over the results of that again, and just clarify our recommendations moving forward for what was proposed during the pilot and how we think we should be moving forward. I have something I can share on the screen, if you don't mind.
Sure. Are you able to do that, Sage? Yep. Great.
He's got me going now. Then this report will be shared with the board this evening.
Is this finalized, Rob?
Yes.
Ryan, sorry. Ryan.
I knew who you were talking to.
Yeah.
He didn't call you one.
He's got more hair.
Ooh. Nice shot. So I'm not going to obviously read through this, but just to kind of give you a high level of what this final report says, we start by kind of going over why the pilot was put in place and the issues that are going on. Everybody in this room, I think, is well aware of the traffic issues on the west side of town during the afternoon rush hour. Hill Street gets backed up, and then the residential streets take up front of the congestion, both on the south side and on the north side. North side, bulk of the traffic is going to McGee Street, that's County Route 39, and the south side is going to Lee Avenue and Captain's Neck. So the pilot, just a reminder to everybody, was to look to alleviate congestion on Hill Street by reducing the conflict points, and to do that, we look to eliminate the opportunity to turn left onto Hill Street in the afternoons, actually, full-time for the pilot at Lee Avenue and Captain's Neck. And again, the thought was to reduce those conflict points, so you'd be able to have traffic moving better on Hill Street and get a percentage of those vehicles that were currently in the residential streets off of those residential streets and back onto Hill Street, where we typically prefer them. So as part of this study, this outlines the issues. We do also identify areas where we took traffic counts. Traffic counts were performed for both of the weeks that the pilot was in place, and they were also taken after the pilot was put in place, just to reestablish a baseline to compare.
And can you tell us, what hours were you recording the traffic?
So the traffic counts were taken Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursdays, which is a standard, most typical traffic day, if you will, from 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And we took that data, and then we kind of condensed it and took the highest, the peak hour, they call it, which is the highest traffic volume for each intersection, and we looked at that and saw where the cars were going and what the volumes were for each intersection at the peak hour of each of those days.
And so you looked at five-hour segments, and then you broke it down into when you saw the busiest time?
Yeah, that's typically how, you would do a traffic study, you would identify the peak hour period, and then you would identify the peak hour from your data.
Got it. Thank you.
And I will point out that the peak hour for the intersections isn't necessarily the same 15-minute interval. That can be for a variety of reasons, but just know that just because the volume is 800 cars at one intersection, it should, it may not be 800 cars exactly at the next So this is some of the traffic data that was already presented at the work session, just in a little bit of a different format. Again, the intersections that we looked at, Hill Street and Lee Avenue, Hill Street at Captain's Neck, and those are the two roads where we implemented the left-turn restrictions, Hill Street at Halsey Neck, where we anticipated a lot of that cut-through traffic going to as part of this pilot, Moses Lane and Bishop's Lane, and Moses at Pelham and Aron. The north side residential streets were not directly impacted by the pilot program, but we anticipated traffic volumes and patterns may change during the pilot, so we wanted to get an idea of what that looked like, which is why we included those in the study. For Hill Street at Halsey Neck, to try and mitigate some of the additional traffic that was anticipated, based on some discussion with the village, we implemented a temporary traffic signal for the first week there. The signal did not perform the way we were hoping to, so after that first week, the signal was removed, and the second week of the pilot continued, just without the temporary signal. So there was the stop condition at Halsey, as there typically was, but the rest of the pilot remained the same. So in addition to, I guess I can summarize the traffic data real quick, just go back up here. So for Hill Street, which is really, we were hoping to see some improvement in the volume, we saw very little, if any, change in the amount of vehicles that were able to traverse Hill Street over the peak hour period during the project. We also looked at the side streets, and while there was a slight decline in traffic that was utilizing the Ox pasture to Halsey Neck route, there was still a high number of vehicles using that, that southerly route. The biggest change was actually on the north side of Hill Street. The Moses Lane, West Prospect cut-through on the north side of Hill Street saw a substantial increase during the pilot program, and that's reflected in the counts that will be provided in this report. So in addition to the counts, we had field observations. Both VHB staff and Southampton Village Police Department provided observation data, anecdotal data that would support or not, hopefully support, but not necessarily, the volume and the traffic data that we were seeing. But the observations that we saw were reflecting the traffic data that we had found. So on Hill Street, we did not see a lot of change in the amount of cars that were going through. When the pilot was in place, the right-turn restriction on the north side of Hill Street was maintained, but there was an increase in violations due to the increased traffic on Moses. I think more people were trying to duck out and get out of that congestion that was up in that area. We also found that since the major, the primary point of where the cars come onto Hill Street was now at Halsey Neck, which is obviously west of, or east, I'm sorry, of Lee and Captain's Neck, the queue started further east, so it ended up further east, which impacted more directly the Business District, First Neck Lane, Windmill Lane, even made it to Nugent. So these were not desirable outcomes that we were looking for. Halsey Neck at Hill Street specifically, I already mentioned the traffic signal. I think the hope with that was that you would provide a set period for Hill Street traffic to get through the intersection, and similar for the Halsey Neck traffic, Halsey Neck Lane traffic, rather than just kind of like a one-for-one, courteous driver scenario where people allow each other to go in. That did not obviously work out, so we went to the stop sign scenario, and it really did not change all that much, the results of the functionality of the intersection in terms of traffic volume getting through. Lee and Captain's Neck during the pilot saw, obviously, a reduction in traffic. A lot of vehicles that would typically go that route went a different way, because they could not go west on Hill Street out of those roadways. There were still some cars that went down Captain's and Lee, made the right onto Hill, and then made a left onto Bishop's, and proceeded up towards Moses and McGee. That was a common maneuver that we had found. We had not seen that prior to the pilot, and in our post-pilot observations, we did not see that happen either. And finally, West Prospect and Moses. So this has been a cut-through for the pilot, it continues to be one now. Vehicles are, they come up as far as David White's, and they'll go down Powell and Prospect and West Prospect, all the way to McGee. The traffic volumes got substantially higher along this residential corridor during the pilot in an attempt for vehicles to avoid the queues that were happening on Hill Street, and the inability to then turn onto Hill Street at any point west of Bishop's. So, yeah, west of Bishop's. So this was, again, something we thought might happen, but it was very clear from our observations, there were several times that the intersection of Moses and Pelham was almost in a gridlock state. So based on the conclusions, you know, again, we were hoping from this pilot to improve movement on Hill Street and get traffic off of the side streets, and that was not achieved based on the data and the observations that we found. So while traffic conditions did improve on Lee and Captain's Neck, it was, it ended up hurting a lot of the other adjacent streets even more so. So the challenge here with this, you know, obviously, is that this is a larger problem than just the village, and, you know, looking at ways to try, creative ways to try and reroute traffic through the village is challenging, and it's not necessarily fruitful, because the vehicles are going to find another hole. If you plug one, they're going to go somewhere else. So it's really just a matter of taking a larger look, working with the county, the town, the state, continuing that process. In the meantime, we look to continue to look at little ways to improve the traffic in the village, but we do not recommend implementing the improvements that were shown in the pilot program for long term. And that is, that's the bulk of, that's the summary that was provided, and then afterwards is a map and some additional traffic data that was also provided at the work session. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Members of the board, any questions for Ryan at this point?
One, just specific detail, I don't know if you can refer to data here, but you said that the traffic on West Prospect and Moses became substantially greater during the pilot. They, those roads already had traffic. Can you show us the data in terms of what it went from and to? Because it's not as though those streets were clear before the trial to begin with. They were pretty substantially trafficked.
Yep. So, and as, there's an appendix to this study that will include all of the traffic data. We're just finalizing the formatting to make it easier to digest. But as you can see on this screen, I know the number's a little small, but it shows that the volumes are up in week, from week two to week three, there is like between 80 and 100 cars that are increasing along Moses Lane and heading towards Bishop's and through Pelham. And that's in an hour. So, you know, over the course of the afternoon, it's a couple hundred cars easily. We found generally that the peak hour for the volumes of the vehicles across the area was in the five to six range. A lot of the numbers you'll see here from the maximum volumes are earlier in the afternoon, because that's where traffic is flowing a little bit better, and that's where we typically identify our counts from, and that's the benchmark we're trying to set, right, and see where we can improve upon that. So that's why you'll see those numbers aren't necessarily correlating with the times when it's gridlocked or at a slower rate, because your volumes are actually lower at that times.
Over the last several years, the situation has grown worse each year. I'm wondering, to what extent do you feel that the village's efforts, which began with making the restrictions on this, on the north side of the street, at Somerset and Bishop's and Gorgon, to what extent do you feel, or can you say, or do you, would you estimate, has contributed to the increase of traffic on the southern side of the street? Do you think there's any correlation there of cause and effect?
So we didn't, our firm wasn't involved with the recommendation to put those right-turn restrictions in, so I don't, we don't have traffic data from that time. But just, if you're asking me as a traffic engineer, if you're shutting down an avenue for vehicles to use as a route, they're going to find alternative routes. So whether that's going up to McGee Street or going down to Ox pasture, that's certainly, or using Hill Street, any of those are potential alternatives. It's impossible to, for me to sit here and say exactly where they were going, but it's some derivation of those options.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll open it, I think at this point, we'll open it to the public. Thank you very much, Ryan, on this, on this topic, yes.
So you stated that Windmill and Nugent in the business.
Need to be at a mic, sorry, for the record.
Frank Horowitz on Lee Avenue, you stated that traffic on Windmill and Nugent, the Business District, why is that considered a bigger problem than gridlock on a residential street? The most western residential street, Lee, the most narrow, where it's gridlock, gridlock, gridlock. Why is that not a bigger problem than the Business District? And then secondly, you stated that Hill Street traffic did not improve. Great. Lee did. We had a life. We had people out on the street, we were biking, we were talking, we were laughing. Our life improved. All we've ever asked is to share the burden. Today, leaving Lee Avenue to get here, we looked, there were 50 cars on Lee, Captain's Neck had 30, and Halsey Neck had 10. All we're asking is to share the burden. And to Trustee Stevenson's question, then eliminate the right-hand turn. Let's just go free-for-all. Let everyone find their own way. But the extrapolation of your data that was rolled out, I believe, in a work session where no one could speak, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, and now we're seeing it now, why don't we have a meaningful review of the data and hear from people after they've had the same opportunity to review this? And I just have one other question. How come we have 10 no parking signs on Lee Avenue from 8:00 to 6:00, and there's none on Captain's Neck and Halsey? When did that happen? It's on the, I'm not good in directions, the, my side of the street, 100. 10, no parking, 8:00 to 6:00.
We adopted a law.
Yeah. That was done to make sure that we didn't have parking on both sides of the street if there were people there, you know, contractors, gardeners, what have you. So on several of the streets in the village, we decided we should move the traffic to just one side of the street. We did it similarly on Halsey and Moses.
Okay, but it's not Captain's and Halsey.
I'd have to look at what, exactly which one.
And it's not enforced. There's still parking.
Well, that's a different issue.
Okay, yeah, I'm just saying, so. That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Horowitz. Anyone else like to speak on this topic? Does Elizabeth Pine want to come back in? Elizabeth Pine Singer, is she still there?
I have three other people.
Can I just, I just want to remind everybody that we are keeping it to a three-minute limit on speaking. I will remind you at 2:45 that you're coming up on three. Also, I'm going to ask everyone to please direct all comments to the village board and not to the consultant or to anyone else, so.
All right, Sage, anyone?
Elizabeth had a time break, so we could get her.
Oh, okay. All right, well, let's just, let's see if you can get back to, there's Elizabeth.
There, here I am.
Sorry. All right, you're up.
Thank you so much, and I hope the dogs, I really hope the dog doesn't bark, but my name is Elizabeth Pine Singer, and thank you for letting me speak this evening. I'm grateful to Mayor Mangere and the trustees, and to Ryan Winter for everything that you're doing for our village, and especially for efforts to try and alleviate the traffic issues that plague all of us. I would just like to take a minute to repeat that Hill Street is a residential neighborhood, and we all also have property values on Hill Street. And people grew up here, we have children bicycling also, we have people trying to cross the road. I'm here this evening to ask you to please return the speed limit on Hill Street to 25 miles an hour, and once it is returned to 25 miles an hour, that the speed limit is enforced by the police of the Village of Southampton. As you all probably know better than I do, Hill Street is becoming more and more dangerous. Drivers are going upwards of 50 miles an hour on Hill Street, totally unchecked by the police. Hill Street is a magnet for anyone who wants to speed. I believe that it is only a matter of time until there- I believe that it is only a matter of time until there's another fatal accident on Hill Street, and there will be no one to blame but the village authorities who are not acting to increase the safety and quality of life for the people who live on and use Hill Street. My family loves the police of the Village of Southampton. Up until a few years ago, they were in fact a constant presence in our driveway. They would sit in their cars at the western entrance of our driveway, waiting to ticket people who are breaking the speed limit on Hill Street. It made me proud of my parents for being helpful citizens, and it made me proud of the police in our village. It also felt like our village is being taken care of and that my children would be safe because the police would keep us safe. But now I feel like I and the rest of the people who live on Hill Street are shouting into the wind. No one is ever enforcing any speed limit or other rules of the road, like making sure people stop at the designated crosswalks. One in 10 do. And believe me, I call and I text and I ask for people to come and stop people who are speeding. Now, the mayor and trustees also know that I would like to add stop signs at certain junctions on Hill Street, and I do, but I also understand that this measure can be, could be controversial and difficult to do. But returning the speed limit to what it has been previously is not controversial. It's a no-brainer, and it will make Hill Street safer. All of the other residential streets in the village have a 25 mile an hour speed limit, and why should Hill Street be any different? And a safety isn't enough of a reason to lower the speed limit to 25 miles an hour. I'd like to now quickly read, if I have time and if I don't, that's fine.
You're at 2:40.
Okay. Can I do 3:30? No? My mother wrote to the Village of South, to the Southampton Press in September. It's about Hill Street and its impact, the very essence of our village, but you know what? Let's just stop at the 25 miles an hour. Please make Hill Street safe. Please return it to 25 miles an hour. It's not going to slow people down, and if people are using Hill Street to get through our village, then go to 39 and has a higher speed limit. But let's keep our village safe for the people who use Hill Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Can I just make a comment? Like Elizabeth, the police have used one of my aprons as well. There were some particular pushes that were made about five years ago at one point, and again about three years ago. I don't remember the exact dates. The police cannot be everywhere all at once. I did see the, the police today pull over someone on Hill Street for speeding, and so I just wanted to say, I understand the perception that can come, that they're not there when you want them or expect them or when you see bad behavior, but without feeling a need to defend the chief, who can defend herself and her team, I do see them there, they are enforcing. There were some special pushes made where, with some extra allocation to Hill Street on a couple of occasions, and if that, I think that may have set an unfortunate expectation that that could be continued all the time. It can't be, I think, unless, chief, you disagree with me on that.
I don't disagree at all.
Okay. Didn't we almost have a record number of tickets issued this year?
Yeah.
What was it again?
A little close to 6,000 tickets.
6,000 tickets.
So, we're doing our job and we're enforcing. And most of that enforcement-
Sorry, she's coming, she's coming.
Most of those enforcement efforts are on the western end of Hill Street. 59% of our tickets are issued at the western end of Hill Street. So, when I read emails from residents that say we're, we're not enforcing, that is completely false. Our officers are out there, we have 29 officers, including myself, and I was one of those people that used to sit in her driveway and write tickets. So, I take offense to it because it's just completely false. We're over 6,000 tickets. Last year, we were at 4,200. So there's a dramatic increase.
Can I ask you a question? And I can ask Ryan the same question, I guess, is what do you think of the 25 mile an hour speed limit as opposed to the current 30 mile an hour speed limit?
If, if my recollection of why it went to 30, it was a traffic study, not by Ryan's firm, but another firm, and the village board at the time, I forget who was on it, went with that recommendation to raise it, and the concept behind it was it would get people out of here quicker, and that's clearly not doing anything.
Well, I mean, late in the day, no one can go 25.
The effective speed limit's about two miles an hour most days for about three hours of the day.
Right, but in the off, in the off-hours, you know, cars do speed. And, you know, that's when we can, when we do most of our enforcement efforts, when the cars are speeding, because they're not speeding during rush hour.
Ryan, what do you think of moving it to 25 miles an hour?
Yeah, I, I agree with the chief. I don't have a issue with considering lowering the speed limit from 25 to 30. It is a residential road. There is a substantial increase in safety for pedestrians and bicyclists if you lower the speed limit to 25, and it makes it easier for the police to enforce that lower speed limit. So, I would not be, I would support lowering the speed limit. You're not going to reduce the volume of cars that are going downhill Street substantially at the times where there are issues. Now, as noted, they're going probably closer to two miles an hour, so whether it's 25 or 30, it's not going to matter.
Would we need a, a study, or no? We just do it based on everything you've seen so far? Could you write something up?
We could write a memo.
Yeah, because I think we need authority to do that.
Yeah, I was going to say, you probably need an engineering judgment to make that modification, but we could work with the village to provide that, if, if they're interested.
Just one more question, chief. Do you recall why it was just to get traffic to move faster, and that was done under-
Another, what is the other engineering firm that the village is-
I think it was NBB, maybe?
Yeah. It was done by them, I feel like 2021, maybe?
Yeah.
And then the, the concept is just when all this stuff started really taking form and getting really bad, and they did a traffic study, and the concept was to get traffic moving out of here quicker.
Yeah.
Because as you know, at the end of Hill Street, at Tuckahoe, it all of a sudden does speed up.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, it's, it's amazing, actually, how it changes from, from Hill Street to, to, you know, the Montauk Highway.
Maybe it's something we should consider, based on a recommendation.
All right. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Len, it's certainly not going to slow down the afternoon or jam things up.
No, no, but Elizabeth is raising safety concerns and-
Ma'am, completely, yeah, come forward.
No, I know. No, I think it's a win-win.
Sorry for the yoke.
Yeah. I'm reading this on behalf of one of the other residents on Lee Avenue, Alyssa and David Lefkowitz. They can't be here, but they asked me to read this letter, and it really, it enforces what all of us on Lee Avenue are feeling. Dear Mayor Manger and members of the Board of Trustees, we reviewed the traffic pilot analysis and are very confused by the decision of the board to not permanently implement the no-left-turn sign on Lee Avenue. Given that all of the data suggests that the traffic on Hill was not affected by the pilot program, and knowing that the traffic on residential streets of Lee and Ox Pasture was greatly alleviated by the pilot program, it clearly points to a decision to keep the no-left-turn restriction. Your constituents on Lee Avenue, including ourselves, who are on the corner of Lee and Ox Pasture, saw an incredible reduction in standstill traffic, along with the accompanying noise of engines, loud music from radios, in addition to an increase in feelings of privacy, safety, and overall well-being. Why in the world would you not keep this in place? The overall traffic was not impacted, yet many of your residents were greatly pleased by the reduction of heavy commercial traffic on our neighbors, on our neighborhood streets. Additionally, additionally, you have similarly prioritized, prioritized the neighborhood, the neighbors south of Hill in the same way. It seems very inequitable that we are unsure why we seem to be getting different treatment from the board, given the data from the traffic analysis and the no-right-turn signs already in place for our neighbors north of Hill Street. And we all feel this, many of us or most of us on Lee, if not all of us on Lee, we did see a greatly reduced amount of cars. So I don't understand the data that it didn't, it was insignificant, and further, which is what Alyssa and David said, if it didn't impact Hill Street, then, then why not keep it? Why not do the no-left-turn? If it made no difference, it did make a difference on Captain's and Lee and Ox Pasture. So, I don't know how many times we all have to be here and write letters. We're so frustrated. We really don't know how to resolve this, and, and the pilot program, great, but A, we don't see any solution, and B, we were all happy with that no-left-turn. It did make a difference, so I, none of us understand the data, to be honest.
All right, 2:45.
I wanted to clarify something related to this, Ryan, if you could. The, the fact that Hill Street traffic wasn't impacted, there was a, I think there were three premises to this study. The, the most important one may be, besides, maybe four. Alleviate, they tried to alleviate the congestion on Lee Avenue and Hetty Creek and Captain's Neck, number one. Number two, try to improve the throughput and volume that could go through, that would go through Hill Street during these hours. And numbers three and four were, don't simply shift traffic to other areas that might already be experiencing equally bad traffic, and don't create new safety concerns or new safety issues. But the, the fact that the Hill Street traffic didn't change was a disappointment to us. We hoped and expected that by reducing that pinch point at Lee Avenue and Captain's Neck, it would allow a significant material increase in the throughput on Hill. Is that correct, generally?
That's, yes, that's accurate. When it pertains to Hill, the, the volume of cars that went through remained the same, and the queue that resulted from shifting the pinch point to Halsey from Lee pushed the queue back further to the west, but there was no real reduction in the queue or the increase in traffic volume on Hill that we were hoping for. That's correct. And then, in addition, there was increase in traffic in other areas that were already seeing heavy volume, and by impacting the business district, you have a higher chance of impacting access to downtown businesses and commercial areas that are important for the, for the village.
Anyone else like to speak on traffic? And you have, sir, let me just have the other person to come on on Zoom, and then you'll be next. Sage, thank you.
I have two others.
Okay, well, we're going to alternate between the room and Zoom. Welcome. Could you just state your, your name and address, please, for the record?
Yes, Alexis Robertson Smith, 445 Hill Street. Good evening, I'm Alexis Robertson Smith. The ongoing heavy traffic where my family lives on Hill Street has turned a residential neighborhood into a hall, into a highway by default. It's a blow to livability in our village, as well as a health hazard. That's why I'm calling for restricting trucks on Hill Street and keeping them on County Road 39. The air pollution caused by traffic, and especially trucks, is linked to asthma, heart disease, and developmental issues. Those living downwind face heightened exposure, including residents of the Shinnecock Reservation. Keeping trucks out of a residential area is a simple solution that will make a big difference for everyone impacted on Hill Street and the surrounding area, including our most vulnerable neighbors. Several towns and cities across the US have successfully implemented similar measures. Thank you for being so responsive to our community concerns.
Thank you very much. Eileen, do you want to address that at all?
Just that it's, we cannot do it. We can't bar. It's a, you have to provide a substantial connection for all state routes through your municipality, so you simply cannot do that. There's clear case law on it.
And the Montauk Highway, as it enters Hill Street-
As it enters or leaves the village, on both, on both ends, it is a state highway. So you'd have to provide an alternate route that is substantially connects it, and I don't know where that would be, except through a different residential neighborhood, so. I don't even know if there is one, so. The law doesn't permit it.
Okay. Sir, you're up.
My name is Randy Knopp, and I live on the Halsey Neck Lane. So, I mean, we all have the same issue and the same problems, so, you know, whether it's Lee Avenue, Captain's Neck, Halsey Neck, First Neck, we all have the same issue, so. You know, I'm not sure what the, what the, what the right answer is, if there is even an answer, maybe one week, because it's mostly in the summer that I think is the biggest issue, but, you know, whether it's-
Okay, wait, let, let him speak.
You know, whether we got to alternate, you know, having a police car on the corner of Hill Street in those four blocks, and no left turn, and you get a ticket if you make that left turn, and just alternate, I mean, I'm not in favor of that either, but at least that's a fairer way of doing it than just, you know, not on Lee, not on Captain's, on Halsey Neck, or not on Halsey but on Lee, or however you want to do it. Because either way, you're going to have people in here, you know, rightfully complaining.
Yeah, I understand.
But I think you at least got to be fair about how you apportion it out, as you said. Close it on one or two streets, people are going to find the other street or the other street. You can either push it in one direction or the other direction, but, you know, that, you know, whatever, you're either going to hurt one street or kind of proportion it out and somewhat slightly hurt each street, but alternating it would be at least somewhat fair.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Yeah. Sage, should we go, go back to someone on Zoom, please? Okay.
Hey, how's it going?
Good, Alex.
Hi, good to see you. I'm Alex, I'm from 67 Lee Avenue. Unfortunately, I can't be there in person. I was then in town last week, but I got to work, unfortunately. Looked like, I'll be, I'll be honest, it's kind of crazy that we're here again today with the same issue we've been discussing for three years. You know, maybe in another life, I should have become a traffic consultant. That's honestly the best way to make money. Maybe I should switch business, right? And have my company do that instead, because honestly, if I were doing the quality of the work, the level of communication and analysis that's being done, I would have already gotten fired, and it's crazy that we're throwing good money after, after bad, in terms of continuously running through first-order thinking when it comes to how to deal with traffic here. I understand that there are complexities associated with second-order effects of how traffic shifts over time. The reality that we're facing is, for three years, Lee Avenue traffic has exacerbated. I was there last week, and even in an off-season afternoon, I don't know, like 5:00, 6:00 PM, it was still bumper-to-bumper. That's crazy, in the most narrow residential street. If it backlogs to commercial streets, that's a lot better than the danger and the value depreciation faced from bumper-to-bumper traffic in a residential neighborhood. And what I'm not hearing at all is how do we solve this problem? We had a pilot that worked. I, from my perspective, never realized that the assumption was a no-left-turn on Lee should reduce Hill Street traffic. That actually makes no sense to me. It's going to be the identical amount of traffic, if at all, right? It might backlog to Wind, was it Windmill and others, but the objective cannot be a reduction of Hill traffic. That should be enabled-
The objective was an increase, excuse me, but the, the objective was an increase in Hill Street traffic, and we didn't achieve it. That was the objective, was to get more cars traveling on Hill Street, and that was not observed.
Okay, good. That's, that's good to know. Separately, though, right, that's kind of like besides the point, right? Because like, we're here for three years because of a lopsided regulation that was done for north of Hill Street, and we're now dealing with the second-order consequences, because back then, people didn't think about, hey, what happens if we do this to everybody else? And now we're dealing with an unfair situation where we're having the burden of that for years now, and it's gotten worse and worse and worse. In parallel, we're having taxpayer-funded money thrown after traffic consultants that kind of just like do step-by-step, honestly, just like what they're told, but don't really make any sort of conclusions beyond the whack-a-mole that we're facing. And just honestly, as like a resident, I ask you, what is the permanent solution that we can do now that is fair and democratic? Because I'm seeing neither. I'm not seeing any type of decision-making, I'm not seeing any strategy, and candidly, our house is impacting and my life is impacted because of the lack of action and the lack of decision-making.
I'm going to ask it and wind up now. You're at the three minutes, 10 seconds, so.
Sure, thank you. In any case, this is important. We're sitting here now for three years. It is absurd that, again, we're facing this situation and this circular conversation, and it's going to be-
We're at three minutes and 30 seconds, so we have other people that want to speak. So I'm sorry.
Thank you, Alex. Chris Brenner.
Chris Brenner, ex-chief of the fire department, 214 White Street. First, my apologies, my condolences to Ed Simeoni's on the loss of his mother this week, and second, to hear the people bash and talk about the police departments just uncalled for. They work their rear ends off day in and day- They work their rear ends off day in and day out, and they're told by the board they have to do certain areas. They can't take care of everything unless we add more police officers, which, hey, go ahead, do it. You know, we need to get more officers on the streets to do that. And we're talking about public safety. We have a firehouse up in Shinnecock Hills that a bunch of us belong to, we can't get to it. I'm not going in the opposite lane of traffic to go up there just because of the roads are backed up, and it's a very big concern for us and public safety. So hopefully, we can come to an agreement and, you know, do something. But again, the bashing of the police department is just too much by some of the residents. You know, they're not, a lot of them aren't full-time residents out here, and we just got to take care of our own police. So, thank you guys very much.
Thank you, Chris. Sage, you have anyone else on Zoom that wants to join the conversation? Okay. Thank you.
Hey, guys, can you hear me?
Yes. William, go ahead.
Hey, Mayor Manger and the board again, thanks for, you know, thanks for the efforts and thanks for the diligence and the thought. You know, I just want to briefly concur, William McClanahan, 131 Lee Avenue. I just want to concur with the comments from, you know, from prior Lee Avenue residents. It was, the pilot, as expected, was a tremendous success for Lee, for Captain's, and I'm assuming for the flow of traffic across Ox. I do think over time, those benefits would endure, meaning people making right-hand turns. And I did want to point out that one of the things I believe we learned, and you guys can ask the consultant after I'm done, but one of the things I believe we learned from the pilot is that the preponderance of the traffic that is coming south of Hill, sorry, the preponderance of the traffic coming through Lee and Captain's and across Ox isn't coming from commercial traffic or commuter traffic originated south of Hill Street. So we did learn, which I think is a great learning when you think about the long-term solution, we're trying to push commuter traffic that isn't indigenous to these neighborhoods back onto County Road 39. And what we learned from this study was, Lee was cured, Captain's was cured, my understanding was Halsey was acceptable, I understand it was elevated from prior but acceptable. The flow on Hill was unchanged, and the result is all that traffic that normally came from north of Hill through our neighborhood stayed north of Hill. Now, while that affected north of Hill, I think that's a huge incremental benefit to the long-term goal of keeping this traffic north of Hill and back on County Road 39. So I just wanted to make sure we covered that point, because we've covered all these other issues. I want to reiterate that it did seem to our residents that, not the primary, but to us, of course, the primary goal of the pilot was to see the benefits to Lee and Captain's without the impact on Hill and Halsey and other south-of-Hill streets being unacceptable. Thanks.
Thank you, William.
Yep.
Anyone else in the room wish to speak? Okay.
Vinny McGann, 12 Robinson Road, Southampton. I'm here for the item on the agenda for Ocean Rescue. I had no intention of speaking about this, but I'd like to, Mayor and the board, thank you for your services. There's a couple of things, I'd like to make a couple of observations and then propose maybe a solution. So I use Hill Street to try to get to Hampton Bays from points east. And my observation is that the reason it's so backed up and slow is because of the traffic coming from the side arteries, north and south. And everybody's pretty good, maybe you can testify to this. People are generally pretty cordial. They let somebody in, then they wait, then they go, then the next person, but that slows everything down. And you've mentioned that at Tucko Road and the reservation.
Speeds up.
Junction, why does it all of a sudden open up? There's no difference in the density of cars, so it's that north-south artery traffic. The second thing is, I sympathize with everyone who lives in those residential areas, and I'll give a quick anecdote, and please keep me on time here, and then I'll offer a potential solution. I lived out by the firehouse in North Sea. Dirt roads, heavily populated, local, and I was backed up for so long on Neuk Road that instead of going to Shore Road, I ducked in early, four streets, stopped and talked to a friend, and it was the onset of waves and everybody trying to dodge traffic and make a two-minute better time back to Patchogue. And the guy said, yeah, it's getting a little crazy here. And I said, you mean the traffic? And he said, yeah, they ran my dog over the other day. And they got one or two cars ahead by doing all that stuff. So that's something to consider, that the north-south traffic, in my opinion, shouldn't be allowed. How do you legislate that? I have no idea. Finally, the solution, we're looking at Band-Aids, and it's so good that we have the data from the surveys you've done, but the solution is public transportation. I know that doesn't affect the village, but it's the trains and the buses, and until that happens, nothing's going to change. You've got single-use autos commuting back and forth to Babylon and Patchogue, and they're in a rush, and I understand that. Thank you for your.
Thank you very much. Sage, you have anyone else on Zoom that wants to come in? Okay, we'll do another Zoom guy. Hey, Jeff.
Can you hear?
Go ahead, just introduce yourself, please, and state your address.
Yeah, hi, it's Jeff Molesky.
And Steve Markov.
From 121 Lee Avenue. Public comment is, we just wanted to reiterate, you know, as we're owners of a research and strategy consultancy, we've been doing this for the last 15 years, and something we can bring to this conversation is, we know meaningful answers are rarely found in limited data sets. The role of a consultancy is typically not to issue a simplistic go-or-no-go recommendation, but to analyze comprehensive data, identifying underlying patterns, and develop actionable solutions. And unfortunately, we have not seen that rigor with this pilot, even the past, where there's been really no transparency or just even clarity around the analysis and synthesis of learnings in terms of what's worked, what hasn't, and how to build upon those prior findings. So, you know, we hear Ryan's report out today, we saw the limited report out two weeks ago, it just doesn't feel like it's taking a comprehensive holistic digging into some of the more nuanced questions. I think people here on Lee Avenue, like William's surface, like Alex's surface, those are the questions you really need to unpack if you're trying to make change. And I don't think it's good enough to say, hey, we tried this, it didn't work, and closing the book. And it kind of feels like that's the default where we go to. A key question we have.
And I think one of the key questions we have is, how do we get our questions answered? I think Frank Horowitz raised a number of very pertinent questions, yet it wasn't a dialogue, it was just kind of a chance for him to speak. So how do we get those questions answered? One of the burning questions we have is, what happened to Hill Street traffic during the peak hours of left-hand turns? So 3:00 is irrelevant. Hill Street traffic moves smoothly at 3:00. So the difference from pilot to post-pilot shouldn't be dramatically different. But what happened from 5:00 to 7:30, when there's typically 800 cars turning off of Lee onto Hill? So the absence of that kind of analysis just really baffles us.
You know, I mean, and it feels like, we keep saying, well, it's just it's going to move traffic from Lee, it's going to move it farther east, and it's going to be in the commercial district. Ryan, I couldn't disagree with you more, that it's better to have traffic backed up as a parking lot on small residential lanes than in commercial streets, which are much wider. It's incredibly dangerous and harmful, you can't even believe what we're living with.
We have been also seeing, where is that increased traffic north of Hill going? Is it going to CR 39?
Right.
If so, that's a success in some sense. How do we then mandate different ways to get to CR 39, but let's not call that a failure?
Yeah, and, you know, again, this comparison of Hill Street to Lee Avenue, again, with all empathy here, they're two different types of roads, we know this. The New York State Department of Transportation classifies Hill Street as an arterial road, while Lee Avenue is a local road. That distinction carries real implications of how traffic should be managed and regulated by our force.
So we can't say they were both country lanes, and now they should both be thorough fair, so we have to stop that kind of conversation.
And finally, I mean, to hear that our valued chief, Hurtow, and her team doesn't have the support, that's not good enough. We can't have that, it's simply unacceptable. We have to make sure that they're given the tools and the support needed to address these dangerous and worsening conditions. We are residents, we're on small lanes, and we got to find a way to do this. So what we would propose is, one, a more comprehensive review of this pilot data. We're willing, from our agency, we're willing to even take more of the data and do finer nuanced cuts than what we're seeing, even from tonight's report out.
We have experienced analysts and data scientists who will look at that and look at it statistically and objectively.
We will do that pro bono. I mean, so again, this is, I mean, this is, we're trying to help here as real residents, we just don't buy the findings, because you're not looking at the key nuances. And then secondly, you know, maybe we have a south-of-Hill traffic subcommittee. I know there's been some traffic committees, I don't think they're meeting on a regular basis with any real agenda and report out, and we need to do this in a way that can really embrace the transparency and collaboration. You know, we're looking to you all, you guys are great leaders, we need you guys to really model this in terms of responsible governance, ones that protects your residents, one that strengthens the community, and delivers lasting data-driven solutions. We've heard some board members say, there really isn't a solution, or it's just going to go from one street to another. That's not good enough.
How do we look at it in relative terms? How do we determine objectives that are acceptable? Because right now, there is no level set. We don't know what is considered success and what isn't. So how do we work together to do that? Thank you.
Okay, thank you both, thank you. Sir, you're up.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, everybody. My name's Dave Cardelli, live on 404 Hill Street. A quick question, I submitted a letter, I know a couple of neighbors submitted letters, but they're not on the agenda. Did we send them to you?
Yes, actually, the village clerk sets up the agenda, and they, because we get so many letters, there's a cutoff time, I believe it's 12:00 the day before, possibly.
Yeah, we sent them early in the week, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I'll confirm with her, but those letters that didn't reach that cutoff time will be on the next agenda.
Okay. So, well, in my letter, and I did email CCF people, you know, hearing everybody talk and moving the traffic from one street to another street, that's clear, that's not the answer. I mean, the consultant said that, we all know that's not the answer. Hill Street is still a residential street, call it what you want. But what's important about Hill Street, and the fire chief said, they need to get up Hill Street, and they can't get up there. On my way here tonight, traffic from, backed up all the way into town. That has to change. If you reduce the traffic on Hill Street, everybody else, all the side cut-throughs will be reduced. So in my letter, I mentioned, if you want other input, other engineers, there's that Cornell Rhodes program, I did some research, they'll come down for free. And it's a neutral party, it's not someone that lives on Hill Street because on Lee, everyone on Lee just wants their sign. And I think it's kind of unfair for everybody else. And if you're going to put, you know, just on that, in my letter, if you're going to put a sign on Lee, well then, put one on Halsey, and put one on Captain's Neck, and make them all three to seven, just like the north streets. But that's just going to jam-pack Hill Street. And his issue, and the fire chief, Hill Street's just going to get so much worse. So to me, the answer always goes back to reduce the overall traffic. And one of the suggestions, and the council here mentioned, she said she can't do it, is to restrict commercial traffic. I spoke with the engineer for Cornell and just had the conversation. I don't know how they did it, but he said they clearly in villages have restricted commercial traffic for specific hours.
Well, sorry, I did the research, and it's incorrect, so.
I don't know what they have or what research they have, maybe they know something that we don't, I don't know. But that's the conversation I asked them, and I noted that in my letter, that.
You asked an engineer?
He's an engineer.
Sure.
But he's dealt with, they've done programs, or pilot programs with villages.
Okay, but you, what you said you wanted to do is ban commercial traffic from Hill Street.
Well, restrict it like three to seven.
Yeah, you can't.
You can't.
Same way you can't ban it, you have to provide a substantial connection between the state highways. You can't just say, no commercial traffic in here. Can you imagine if every village was allowed to do that, or every municipality was allowed to do that? That's why they don't allow it.
Well, that program's funded by the federal government in New York State, the DOT. And I asked them, that's a conversation I had with them, and he said, absolutely can be done. I don't know how, you know, you have engineers, you have consultants, just somebody have a conversation with that department. It's connected to New York State. You know, that's, might be worth it.
One thing we do is restrict it by weight on certain streets. Maybe that's what he was alluding to?
No, no, he was restrict commercial traffic, period. Weight is a whole nother topic. You can reduce, and that's really hard to enforce, but just commercial plates. And that's a conversation I had with them, so I'm just putting it out there.
The fourth department has a case right on point, where they say you cannot do it.
We know how it goes, as attorneys, I'm just saying, that's a conversation I had with them, and I.
I don't know what you know.
I can reach out to them, because he said, they said, we'll come down and we'll do it for free, it won't cost the village nothing. I know we're paying for consultants, and no disrespect, I'm sure they're great, or maybe not from what I hear, but it's just another, you know, it's a federal agent, they're funded by our government, and it's free, no cost to the village, just to see what they say. They may come up with something we haven't even thought of, to reduce the traffic, but I think it's the overall traffic.
We're at 3:15, so.
All right, but that's, thanks.
Oh, thank you very much, appreciate it.
And I agree with reducing it to 25.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's great, we can do that.
Sage, anyone else on Zoom? Okay, anyone else in the room then? You already spoke, though, let's have Mindy Forten. Mindy Forten, but you had three minutes, we can't just keep going around and around.
I'm going to be real quick, Mindy Forten, 190 Little Plains Road, no skin in this game yet. What happened, I didn't read about it, or I missed it, to the September 16th meeting with everybody to allow the change on 39?
I'm going to let trustee.
Yeah, so we had the meeting on the 16th. Two weeks to the day after that, we received the concurrence. So the, on November 12th, which was yesterday, they restriped County Road 39 to mimic what was done in the pilot last spring. And today, our police department put cones from North Sea Road leading north onto County Road 39 to make that one lane, so that there wouldn't be two lanes going into one lane on 39. So we are ready to see that this will begin, I think, on Monday, the 17th, and we're hoping that it alleviates a lot of the issues that we're listening to tonight. And I'm sorry that Alex, who spoke earlier, wasn't aware of that, because there was a strategy, and it was a little more global than pushing traffic around the village. It will encourage people with a more efficient drive time to stay on County Route 39 and not come to our residential streets. That's, fingers and toes are crossed.
Yeah, trustees, I'm glad you said that, Lynn, because that, there is a strategy. I think a number of people felt it was unlikely that anything we would do in the village, including the no-left-turn pilot, would substantially solve the problem for everybody, or provide enough benefit to one group without harming others, that it was going to make a difference. This is a regional problem, this County Road 39 pilot is a regional strategy. And I just echo what Lynn said. I've also, I don't want to burst Lynn's bubble or trustee's and auntie's bubble, but I also said, I think at the best, I hope this pilot works, I think it will. I think we bought ourselves, you know, a couple, three, four years before the volume builds enough more that we're going to have to address it again. And to the point that Chris made, I think, no, this gentleman here, we need to look at public transportation, at shuttle buses in the downtown areas from train stations, we need to encourage a carpooling culture, even among ourselves, may seem foreign to us, but we need to do it. We need to encourage and provide strategies for off-hours work, so that we reduce the concentration of when certain people commute, to the extent we can. We're going to need to have all of those tools available to keep ahead of this problem, assuming that the County Road 39 problem, the pilot, is as successful as we hope it, as it was in the spring, and we hope it will be again.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room like to add anything?
One question.
Okay, you can, I don't know why I'm breaking the rules, but anyway, go ahead.
Well, you have, and you let Elizabeth, three weeks ago, talk for seven times.
Oh, jeez, okay.
How can we get answers to the questions that Steve asked and I asked? That's my only question. Can, would you like us to submit them to you, and you could respond?
Yeah.
Three, four, or five questions.
Yeah, I think that would be good. Actually, we can submit them to Lynn, and then we can also share them with our traffic consultant and see if we can get you some answers.
Thank you for the extra time.
All right, you're welcome. All right, if there's no one else, Sage, last chance. Okay. All right, well, then, I'm going to end this discussion, board presentation on the traffic update. I want to thank Ryan Winter for being here tonight, taking a couple knocks, but we appreciate you being here, and I also appreciate the chief being here. So with that, then, I think we'll move on to the next public hearing, which is local law amending Chapter 110 of the Village Code, vehicles and traffic by updating the schedules related to stop intersections, 110-37 Schedule F. I will make the motion.
Second.
Okay, so this is, we talked about this before. It's adding a fourth stop sign to a four-way intersection at Pond Lane and Culver Hill, Culver Street, where there is a missing stop sign when you're traveling south on Pond Lane. It's just a yield. And this was pointed out to us by an astute member of the community. And again, I spoke to the chief about this, and again, it does make sense to make this a four-way stop with stop signs at all sides of the intersection. So with that, I'll make a motion to open this. We have a second?
Second.
Yes, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, and so is anyone on the board or anyone in the room interested in speaking about the stop sign at Pond Lane and Culver?
I'm just going to say, it makes sense to me. My only concern is if you had more than about three or four cars stop that intersection, at that intersection, which you could have during a heavy commute, it could back up into the lighted intersection. So let's do it, and let's just see if that happens, if there's a risk of that. And because the other alternative to me would be simply taking it away and giving that direction the right-of-way versus the other three. But I'm in favor of getting rid of the yield sign and ask that we just monitor.
Yeah, I'm in favor of it. As well as a jogger, I come down that intersection, and you really have to be careful because nobody has to stop, so, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. So if there are no other comments on this, I will make a motion to close this public hearing for the local law amending Chapter 110. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Thank you. Next is a public hearing on local law amending Chapters 116-32, Board of Architectural Review and Historic Preservation Procedure for Application, Public Hearing 65-6, Board of Architectural Review and Historic Preservation Certification of Appropriateness, Application Procedure, and 116-37 Building Permit, Certificates of Occupancy, Fees Enforcement to Impose Expiration on Certain Approvals Issued by the Board of Architecture Review and Historic Preservation. So I will make a motion to open this public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Eileen, do you want to add anything from a legal perspective?
No, just this was recommended to us by the Architectural Review Board, or members of the Architectural Review Board, and the village planner to maybe put in some expiration dates on some of these approvals.
So, and basically, it gives three years, and then you can come back twice for two 18-month extensions.
Right, that's, I think on.
So you could get a total of six years from when the permit is actually issued.
That's just, that's on the architectural approval itself, right.
Right, right.
And then there are some other terminations on the certificate of appropriateness. It's also three years, I believe, and up to two 18-month extensions on that. And then the demolition permit would be good for one year unless, during that one year, a, or after that year, a valid building permit for the demolition has been issued, at which case it would remain valid. But to get a demolition permit, a building permit for demolition, you would have to, this is currently the law, you have to get a letter demonstrating that the power, the gas, the electric, everything to the house has been shut off, that there's no more access to it.
In order to demolish the house.
In order to demolish it. You can't get the permit without that, so these houses would be vacant.
Understood, okay. So with that, anyone on the board wish to speak about this, or again, we'll open it up to the public? Ma'am?
I don't think this is.
You have to come forward, please.
Oh, okay.
And state your name and address for the record.
Name is Lee Dance. Address is 86 West Prospect. I don't think this is the topic, but I can't find it anywhere on the agenda. But I've heard something about a plan to extend historic, the historic district, and no homeowners have been informed about it. Ed, do you know if there's anything being shared or reported about this?
Okay, so this is, this is, that's fine.
Or is it another topic?
Yeah, just, yeah, give us a few minutes to finish the public hearing so we don't mess up the record.
When will that be on the agenda?
At the public comment period.
When you, and if public comment, you can make a public comment.
Is that at the end?
Yes.
You'll see on there, it says correspondence. I read the correspondence from right below that says public comment.
Just a couple minutes.
This is a public hearing specifically about this, this proposed legislation.
And there isn't any resolution on the agenda tonight related to changing or extending the historic district.
Pardon me, I missed that?
There is no agenda item or resolution tonight or hearing related to changing or extending the historic district.
I still want to know when.
You can comment on it.
What areas are.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, anyone else wish to speak on this, this item? It's open.
So the total is six years, effectively? Three years with two 18-month extensions for each of these items?
Correct, yes. And that was recommended by Alice Cooley.
So it essentially, right, and it essentially takes away the discretion of the Architectural Review Board to extend it further.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Interesting, okay. I had heard from someone who had misunderstood that this was one year and wanted to be kept open so they could speak, but they couldn't be here tonight, couldn't make themselves available, but.
It's only one year on the demolition permit.
It's only on the demolition, the certificate of appropriateness with the demolition.
Got it.
But if you get a permit for doing a renovation or something else that lasts for possibly up to six years.
Right, and there's, there's not a high risk that people are just going to get a demolition permit and building permit and sit on it because they can't use the house. It's, it's going to be vacant, there'll be no CO on the house once you get a demolition building permit issued, so.
All right, so anyone else in the public want to speak on this? Okay, so I will make a motion to close this public hearing of amending Chapters 116-32, et cetera.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone in opposition? All right, the fourth public hearing, and I think that's why a lot of these people are here, I see their shirts, amending Chapter 99 taxation to provide a tax exemption to Southampton Village Ocean Rescue members as authorized by 466-M of the New York Real Property Tax Law. So I will make a motion to open this public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, anyone wish to speak on this topic?
In fact, I'd just say, this, this resolution puts the Ocean Rescue on even par with our wonderful Volunteer Fire Department and Ambulance Department. Ocean Rescue is the third leg of our first-responder triumvirate along with our Police Department. And in order to be eligible for this benefit, the Ocean Rescue has, has set forth fairly rigorous standards in terms of what you have to do, in terms of showing up and perform, and doing the duties of Ocean Rescue. So you just can't sort of say, well, I'm in Ocean Rescue, and I'd love to get this benefit and save on taxes. You actually have to go, train, do the work, and do the great job that all of our Ocean Rescue Department folks do. So I think this is a very fair and just thing to do, to provide the Ocean Rescue first responders with the same benefit our other first responders get, so I think it would be an excellent thing for the board to approve.
All right, anyone wish to speak on this? Mr. Rung.
I really thought there'd be about eighty other people up here talking in favor of this. Let me offer that providing this tax exemption for Southampton Village Ocean Rescue members is concerning in that it does not state or limit the cost of this exemption to other village taxpayers. As with all village shifts of the tax burden, this disproportionately adversely affects the residents of lower-valued properties. If this exemption is appropriate, a better method is to set a dollar amount of a specific assessed value reduction for each member. This would limit the cost to taxpayers and give each recipient the same amount of tax savings. Another concern, these benefits are only for a select group of members. The benefit is denied those who are non-village residents or who are renters. This seems like discrimination to me, surprising that it's allowed. I would also ask, does East Hampton provide for this benefit? And the reason I bring that up is that one of these days, this board has to have the gumption to address the issue that our budget here is 36 million, East Hampton is 26 million, Sag Harbor is 16 million. We spend considerably more money for the same services, and those costs are disproportionately forced upon the residents of lower-valued properties. Residents of Meadow Lane pay one-third to one-half in relation to value of residents of others. So I'm only bringing these concerns to light just that they be considered before this resolution is passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, would you like to speak on behalf of Ocean Rescue?
I can respond to that.
Please, stand up, please.
Okay, so first of all, there is a dollar amount attached to it. It's a New York State law that we get up to 10%. It's only for the people who live in the village because there is, there is, is part of the law, this taxation law, is that you have to be covered under the jurisdiction that you operate. So it's, it's that, it's all New York State law. It doesn't have to do with, it doesn't have to do with what the village is accepting or what we're asking for. This has already been passed through the state, the town, and the county. So, you know, we are just asking for the same, the same rights that, that police officers and EMTs get. East Hampton does in fact, has in fact passed this law already. I think that's, were there any more questions that I didn't answer?
Thank you, chief.
You did great.
Anyone else from, anyone else wish to address this topic? Okay, well, then, I will make a motion that we close this public hearing, amending Chapter 99 on taxation. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we will go to correspondence from the board, for the board.
Yes, we have quite a bit tonight. I just want to quickly say, I did have several requests for people to read their letters to us in their entirety. I simply can't do that. We have two choices, either summarize everybody's or read everyone's. And if we read everyone's, it would take a great deal of time, and they have to get back to the business, to the general business of the village, so.
Hello.
Sorry if you requested that. Correspondence from Scarlett Robertson, who raises concerns with reference to heavy traffic and hazardous diesel fuel emissions. She also objects to no-left-turn signs being placed on any one street, southern to Hill Street. She proposes traffic solutions for Hill Street, reduce the permitted wait limit, restrict commercial traffic during rush hour, return to the 25 mile per hour speed limit, and review New York State Traffic Law Sections 1600, 1640, 1643, and 1660. We have correspondence from William Robertson, concerns with reference to safely exiting their driveway and air quality. He proposes eight separate traffic solutions. He references the proposed traffic solutions of Scarlett Robertson, and then in addition to that, installation of speed bumps on Hill Street and side roads, installation of stop signs, permanent blinking light at St. Andrews Road, further enforce and add more no-left-turn restrictions. We have correspondence from Elizabeth Pine Singer, concerns are for ongoing safety issues, hazards, negligence, and life-threatening conditions on Hill Street. Request for corrective action, return to the 25 mile per hour speed limit, and installation of stop signs at Hill Street main junctures. Correspondence from Alisa and David Lefkowitz, questions why no-left-turn policy on Lee Avenue was not permanently implemented, felt it was greatly reduced traffic and increased privacy, and unsure why residents south of Hill Street are not prioritized the same. Correspondence from Lauren Santo Domingo, questions why heavy traffic is unacceptable, questions why heavy traffic is unacceptable throughout the village and tolerated on Lee Avenue, and has concerns with reference to consistency and fairness. Correspondence from Cornelia Erklenz, expresses disappointment with the traffic pilot analysis, measured the wrong traffic hours of 3:00 to 5:00 p.m., focused on Hill Street only, feels Lee Avenue residents deserve equitable treatment, request no-left-turns policy, and clarity in decision-making. Correspondence from Frank Horowitz and Sharon Denner, notes the clarification of incorrectly comparing Lee and Captain's Neck versus Halsey Neck, as well as Hill Street versus Lee Avenue, for their intended function and traffic patterns. Uses references New York State Department of Transportation Classification Categories 16, 17, and 19. Correspondence from Jeff Milewski and Steve Markov, concerned with decision not to proceed with left-turn restrictions, concerned by traffic analysis limitations and incomplete data, timing and measurement of incorrect traffic hours, only focused on streets north of Hill Street, questionable conclusions characterizing congestion in the commercial district. Correspondence from Isabella Alexander and Alex Legal, questions why the board would accept the incorrect results of the traffic analysis, feels the only solution is no-left-turn on Hill Street. Correspondence from John Zeeman, feels that Lee Avenue is too narrow for emergency vehicles, and supports no-left-turns from Lee Avenue. Correspondence from Robert Lovett, who actually raises the concern with regard to the ban on gas blowers. He's the owner of a landscaping company, concerned about banning gas-powered blowers, suggests that alternatives such as battery-powered are not sufficient, and notes that the equipment is crucial to operation, and proposes that they are allowed to be used from December and January, Tuesdays to Fridays from 9:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. And that would complete the correspondence.
All right, thank you very much. Now we will go to general public comment. So this is general public comment.
Oh, yeah.
You can come forward, since you sort of jumped, yeah.
So I'm just trying to figure out, in the newsletter, there was comment at the beginning of the newsletter, the one that has you on there, Rob, about expanding the historic, and historic district to the Board of Trustees, so it would be under your jurisdiction, I guess, against, instead of the ARB. And I was really involved and concerned last time we talked about the expansion of the historic district, and I remember, Ed, you had, I'd also spoken out against that without really proper involvement of the community and homeowners. And then, Ed, I know you said, no, there was no plans to do any of that, we have that on the record during the campaign, but I'm, it sounds different from what the wording is here. And Rob, or Ed, can you tell me, like, when we will see a report on, on what is planned about some sort of expansion of historic district, and who gets to know about that? What is the transparency involved in that whole exercise? Ed, what's your sense?
Oh, there is a report that has been submitted by Preservation Studios.
That's what I heard, a couple years ago.
To the ARB. Presently, it has not been, has not been reviewed by anybody outside of the ARB, and I am trying to see if it's possible for the trustees at least to see what's in that report.
What's the interest of the ARB to want to keep it to themselves? Is it like a power thing?
Well, no, the, the report is not finalized. The data.
It's been, it's been in progress for like two years, no? I mean, I saw.
One year.
One year.
It's about a year. They, they, they need to review the data that was submitted to them by the consultants. I know they want to do some mapping. They also want to consult with SHPO, which is the state authority that governs, you know, the historic preservation. And once they, they feel that it's, it's in a form that it can be shared, they obviously will share it. But right now, they just really got the data that was presented to.
So they're not making any actions.
There's no actions being taken at this point, and.
No action at this point.
Yeah.
But the data could be shared.
But the data could be shared.
Yeah, I just don't get why we can't have some sort of insight into that, Rob, because you wrote this.
I, I don't think I did write anything on Historic District. I might have been on the cover.
Oh, you're at the heading of this on the cover.
I was on the cover.
So it's wording, but maybe you didn't write it.
I wrote the whole, I wrote the whole newsletter. So I don't.
Would you fix the traffic?
Yeah, I'll fix traffic while I'm at it. You know, there's, there's a couple of things going on here. There is this study that's going on. These things do take time. I personally feel it'd be nice to begin wrapping that up and get the last pieces put together so that the ARB does have enough information to complete analysis and share their findings and do a presentation to share their findings.
Right. And through that, will we get, what will we get to know?
No, the, the public, the public will be made aware of all of this. In fact, there will be public hearings when, when they have the report to discuss it. So it's, it's, it's not being done in secret. The problem is, the report is really not completed yet. They provided the data on the, the work that they did, and now they want to, again, I spoke to Mark McIntyre, Chairman of the ARB, over the weekend. He said, we want to do a plotting on a map of the village of where these properties have been identified, to see the concentration of them. And then they also want to consult with SHPO, which is the, the state historic, what does SHPO stand for again?
Preservation Office.
Preservation Office. So they want to do that. And at that time, then they feel it will be available to be presented to everyone. But it's, it's, it's sort of like a half-baked thing right now.
Okay. It's, it's just, you can imagine, if some of us think, don't, don't know and are planning to do all sorts of things with our homes, and we have no knowledge, there's no transparency, it seems. I mean, how can the ARB not just share it with you guys to look at, so you can start to think about the questions? When we get to know, why is, what is the reasoning for the expansion of the Historic District? Who decided? From what I see, the restrictions on homeowners in the Historic District would lower their, their housing values by tremendously, would have them have to go through additional hoops for any kind of landscaping changes, in what I've seen before. So I, I just am asking you, please, to try to put pressure on them and try to be more transparent yourselves. I mean, I, what power do you have if you can't get the ARB to give you the friggin' report?
We're at 320.
What power do you have as a board?
Just to give you a little bit of information, the reason that the report was created was that when the master plan was revised, which is the first time it had been done in many, many years, it was done, what, Bill, '23?
It was done in 2000, again, it's in 2022.
So in the revised master plan, the point was made that the original Historic District dated back to the 80s, and the feeling was that little by little, perhaps some historic buildings that were outside of the Historic District.
The feeling was, by who?
The master plan.
Not by taxpayers, I guess.
The master plan was, the master plan was, was debated, there were public hearings, and the master plan made the suggestion to make sure that there weren't.
The master plan isn't a group of people. Who are you talking about?
The master plan is a village document that guides the future development.
But who said they feel? I'm trying to get, who said they have a feeling?
Can I just finish, can I just, if you'd listen to me, maybe.
I'm just trying to understand who it was.
The master plan is developed by the village government.
Okay, the village government.
The Board of Trustees develops the master plan, and it guides the, it is not a, it's not code, but it's suggestions for what we would like to see happen to Southampton Village going forward.
Right. Without getting the input of the public.
No, no, that's incorrect. That's incorrect. There were many meetings held in person and by Zoom, where, and actually, there were surveys that were taken from the public, and everyone got to comment, and that is how they arrived at the final solution.
And the point was, not to expand the Historic District, but to just figure out, are there dwellings, are there buildings that might be worthy of preserving before they are torn down or modified or changed? And the ARB got $45,000 grants, so the village didn't have to pay to do that survey, which is what we're all waiting for. Now, the, the second question is, once the survey is in, and a decision begins to be made whether or not to expand it, the way the Southampton Village Code is currently constructed, the ARB has the authority to make that change. Personally, as a member of the Board of Trustees.
They have the authority without asking about homeowners?
With public hearing, with public input, but they have the responsibility.
So nobody, there's no vote or anything? There's no input from the community?
They would get, they would have hearings, you would get to talk, you would, you would get to raise your objections, but they get to have the final say, the way the code is currently written.
That's pretty scary.
It's my opinion that the, the ARB should make a recommendation of what they think should happen to this board.
Right. And that's what, that's what was said in that newsletter.
Because I guarantee you, if they make a recommendation that most of the people are not happy with, it's going to be this board that hears all about it, and if people like you coming in saying, why did this happen?
Coming in all freaked out, right.
And if I'm going to get criticized for something, I would at least like to have the opportunity to weigh in on it.
Way on in it first.
So, I believe even that we are working currently on legislation, I spoke with the mayor about this, I spoke to trustee Coburn about this, to modify the code, to change it so that this board would be able to make the final decision based on, with recommendations from the ARB. Now, that legislation hasn't been written yet. I know, Eileen, you're, you're working on it.
Which is a suggestion that I had made some time ago, and I believe most of the trustees are in agreement with that. Also, there is a, a, from Preservation Studios, there is a report out there, and I am trying to see if I can be able to view it, at least to be able to see what the data is and the statistics and the maps and whatnot.
Okay. Yep. It sounds like the taxpayers put so much of our faith in you, six or seven people, and we just aren't getting enough information, even with the newsletter. And it's just, I still have to make a public statement that I am not happy with the transparency of this board. Thank you. Thank you for your info.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Can I address a couple of things related to that? First, as you've heard, there is a, I think, a desire, pretty broadly shared, maybe unanimously shared desire in this board, to consider amending our code to change the deciding authority from the Board of Architecture Review and Historic Preservation to this board. That would make us consistent with the Town of Southampton, the Village of Sag Harbor, and the Village of East Hampton, all of which, with the possible exception of Southampton Town, but there's some dispute, and I'm told I'm wrong about this, but all the others of which are certified local governments, which is what we are also, which is a designation with SHPO, the State Historic Preservation Office. And I think all things being equal, we'd like to keep that designation. It's not necessary, but it's a nice thing to have. It's why we got the grant to do some of the studies that we're doing. But there had been some idea that, that turning this decision over to this board from the Architecture Review Board, based on their recommendation, would somehow jeopardize that CLJ status. It, it appears that it may not be the case. We're looking into that, doing a little more work on it. And I wanted to have on tonight, but I think it'll maybe be on for the working session, a, a resolution to have a hearing on this exact topic in our December meeting. So, this is one thing I wanted to say. The other thing I feel like is important for public education here and understanding, and I had to look into this myself many years ago. There is a fundamental question about, are we preserving structures, which is one approach to preservation, or are we preserving a look and feel, the appearance of structures, how they can be seen from the street for the benefit of the public? And that's an important distinction to make. I'll just say, when our code was originally considered back in the 80s, it was going to fail on a one to four vote, because not just people in the Historic District, but people generally in the population, we've got a couple of people here who may remember some of this, Alan shaking his head, but Joe may remember as a, as a baby. But the, the concern, even among people not in the Historic District, was that this was an unfair limitation of property rights. And what was then focused on and realized was, what we really want to do is preserve the look and feel, what you see from the roadway, what we all enjoy visually, that is an asset collectively that we all share and enjoy. And that was how the code was written, it was to preserve the look and feel. Now, our code was changed pretty significantly in January of 2023 to, to turn that back, to basically overturn that compromise that was made, without which, in my opinion, based on the research I did, we wouldn't even have a Historic District. So this is part of the equation as well, and I think it's, this meeting, hopefully in December, and, and this whole topic, is a good opportunity to just refresh a common understanding of why we have a Historic District, and what it means, why it's valuable, what its benefits are, what its limitations are, where the burdens are. We've sort of lost the thread of that, and it'd be nice to take the opportunity, some of it may be a little bit gnashing of teeth at times, but that's, you know, happens with, with sensitive topics. But it'd be nice to have the opportunity to have a dialogue on this topic and get back to a more shared consensus on the value and the need and the importance of the Historic District.
I really don't question that.
I also, I would like, I would like to assure you that this is, we're not being anti-transparency. This is a board that we appointed, this Architect Review Board, and we entrusted them with certain obligations, and we're asking them to do their job, and they're not ready. It's like you wrote a term paper and you weren't ready to turn it in. That's what's going on. They're, they're working on the report. So it's not, there's nothing nefarious going on, and it is not a transparency issue. We're waiting, like everybody else is, to hear what this report says. I think, it's that simple.
Ma'am, you can't, you can't really speak from the audience. Yeah. But I, I think we've, we've covered this topic, really. So, again, we will discuss this at the, at the work session, and then, as, as Rob said, I anticipate that we will have a public hearing about more of this on the, meeting on December 11th. All right. Any other comments? Sheila Pfeifer, please come forward.
Good evening. Good evening, thank you. Sheila Pfeifer, 56 Hildre Street. I am here as Chair of the Environmental and Sustainability Committee for the Village, and I want to thank the board, again, really, for promoting clean water and safe groundwater in Southampton Village by sponsoring a public information event about how residents can replace their old septic systems at no cost for most people. Grants are available in amounts up to $60,000. And I just want to say that the most surprising thing that I personally learned from listening to the scientific presentations on our village water issues, is that almost everyone, or every house in the village, is contributing to the green water of Agawam, Old Town, and Wicca Pog ponds, and also probably the water underneath. The pollution is not solely caused by the residences directly on these waters. We are all part of the problem. So, everyone is invited to the Southampton Cultural Center on Saturday, November 22nd, at 2:00 p.m., for all the details about the science, the technology, and most important of all, the money that is available for installing low nitrogen sep, low nitrogen septic systems, sorry. And there will be cookies. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila.
Thank you, Sheila. Any other people for public comment? Sage, do you have anyone on Zoom? No? Okay. All right. Well, then, I think we'll go on to suggested resolutions. Len, do you want to start off?
Number one, resolve the claims for the warrant dated November 13, 2025, totaling Warrant number A12, general, $213,229.28. Warrant number H6 capital. $14,500 warrant number CS3 trust. $3,017.15 warrant number T11 trust. And $9,468.8 warrant number A13 utilities are audited and approved. I'll make the motion.
Second, all in favor? Aye.
Number two, resolve the reading of the minutes for the October 21st, 2025 Board of Trustees meeting, is dispensed, accepted, is filed by the village clerk, hereby ratified and approved. I'll make that motion.
Second, all in favor? Aye. All right. Whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Southampton is considering amending Chapter 110 of the Village Code of Southampton by updating the schedules related to stop intersections, 110-37 Schedule F, and whereas a public hearing was held by the Village Board on November 13, 2025, at which time all persons either for or against said amendment were heard, now therefore be it resolved, Local Law Number 12 of 2025 is hereby adopted. I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Southampton is considering amending Chapter 99 of the Village Code of Southampton Taxation to provide a tax exemption for Southampton Village Ocean Rescue members, as authorized by Section 466m of the New York Real Property Tax Law. And whereas a public hearing was held by the Village Board on November 13, 2025, at which time all persons either for or against said amendment were heard. And whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Southampton has determined that this proposed local law is considered a Type II action under 6 NYCRR Part 617.5 provisions of the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, and that no further review under New York Environmental Conservation Law Article 8 is necessary. Now therefore be it resolved, Local Law Number 13 of 2025 is hereby adopted. I make that motion.
I'll second.
A discussion?
Oh, yeah.
Just a quick comment. It's probably implied in the New York State Real Property Tax Law, but could we put the word "partial" before "tax exemption," just for clarity's sake, in this resolution? Would anyone object to that? It's not a full tax exemption right there.
How is it written?
Well, you don't have to use the word "partial" because the law says it's 10%. It defines it.
Okay, all right, that's fine. Okay.
Thank you. All right, so we have a motion, a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Eileen, you want to take this one?
Whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Southampton has determined that this proposed local law is considered a Type II action under 6 New York Code of Rules and Regulations, Part 617.5(c)(22) of the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, and that no further review under New York Environmental Conservation Law Article 8 is necessary, now therefore be it resolved, the Village Board hereby directs that a public hearing shall be held as a hybrid in-person Zoom meeting on December 11th, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. at the Village Meeting Room at Southampton Village Hall located at 23 Main Street, Southampton, New York, 11968, to hear any and all persons either for or against a proposed local law entitled "A Local Law Amending Chapter 80-1D of the Village Code, Ocean Beach Regulations enumerated, by Limiting and Controlling Certain Beach Driving in accordance with the Settlement Terms of Johnson et al. versus the Village of Southampton et al." That is your motion. Just so you know that this legislation will, this change is required so that we can comply with the settlement we reached in the Johnson Beach Driving case that was ongoing for decades in this village. So, it just changes the number of cars that can be down on that particular beach, the hours that they can be there.
It's codifying the stipulation in the agreement.
Correct. Right. Because even though we entered the agreement, we couldn't enforce it against motorists until we changed the code. So, that's what this is about.
So this will be changing the code so that it will be in place by, yeah, by the spring, when people may go back down onto the beach. So, we heard that, so I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Number six, resolve the Board of Trustees hereby approves the application submission for the 2026 Community Development Block Grant for Southampton Daycare Center, and Heart of the Hamptons, and authorizes the mayor or designee to execute any documentation that may be required regarding the allocation of received funds. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Whereas the Village of Southampton is installing a new comfort station at Moses Park, and has determined that the installation of an innovative alternative IA sanitary system is necessary to support the project, and whereas LKMA Engineering has prepared detailed bid specifications for the Moses Lane Park IA sanitary system project, and whereas the project is proposed to be publicly bid, with bid documents available beginning Friday, November 14th, 2025, and bids due on Wednesday, December 3rd, 2025, at 2:00 p.m., now therefore be it resolved, the Office of the Village Clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise for a public bid as follows. Notice to bidders, take notice that sealed bids will be received by the Office of the Village Clerk of the Village of Southampton at Village Hall, 23 Main Street, Southampton, New York, 11968, on Wednesday, December 3rd, 2025, at 2:00 p.m., prevailing time, at which time and place they will be publicly opened and read aloud for Moses Lane IA sanitary system. A pre-bid meeting will be held at 10:00 a.m. on Wednesday, November 26th, 2025, at the project site, located at 248 Moses Lane, Southampton, New York. Attendance is strongly encouraged but not mandatory. Bid specifications will be available beginning Friday, November 14th, 2025, at the Office of the Village Clerk during regular business hours, Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. and excluding holidays, or by email request, sent to SPhillips Jr. at SouthamptonVillage.gov, available Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Each bid proposal must be submitted in a sealed envelope, clearly marked Moses Lane Park IA sanitary system, and be it further resolved that all bids must be received by the Office of the Village Clerk no later than 2:00 p.m. on Wednesday, December 3rd, 2025, at which time they will be opened and publicly read aloud, and be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees reserve the right to waive any informalities in the bids received, and to reject any or all bids in the best interest of the village, and be it further resolved that the Village Clerk is hereby authorized and directed to publicly notice to bidders in the local newspaper of the village. I'll make the motion.
Second.
And just, just a discussion. The good thing about this is the Southampton Town Community Preservation Fund will provide the village with $50,000 for water quality to be used towards this installation of the IA sanitary system, to be part of the, the comfort station at Moses Park. So, so that's very good, and we thank the, the town for making those monies available to us.
Can we get them to make it bigger to handle 80,000 gallons a day?
Anyway, all right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Whereas the Village of Southampton has been awarded Town of Southampton 2023 CPF Grants for the Wicca Pog Road, Philip Pond, and Old Town Pond Bioswale Projects, and whereas the village intends to commence the construction phase of And whereas the village intends to commence the construction phase of said bioswale projects. And whereas LKMA has provided engineering services in connection with the design of the projects. And whereas LKMA has offered and the village has reviewed an additional proposal to construct administration and inspection services in support of the construction of the bioswales at an estimated cost to the village of $18,400. Therefore be it resolved, the Village Board of Trustees hereby accepts the proposal of LKMA which shall be performed in accordance with the terms of the proposal and the village's 2025 consulting agreement with LKMA, the cost of which shall be reimbursed by WQIP grant from the Southampton Town CPF. So, again, that's the water quality monies going towards these projects. So, I will make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay. Ed?
Whereas the village is considering a project which would realign Pond Lane within existing right-of-way, westerly to the greatest extent possible while allowing for a pedestrian thoroughfare with a visual visor to Lake Agawam. And whereas the plan would include improved roadway drainage with a bioswale on the west side of Pond Lane and would elevate the east side of Pond Lane so that it is higher than the west side, thereby preventing overland discharges from the roadway onto Lake Agawam. And whereas Village Consultant LKMA has offered and the village has reviewed a proposal to prepare required surveying and mapping as well as preliminary design plans and permitting for the project, now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees accepts the proposal of LKMA for surveying, engineering, design, and permitting services in connection with the Pond Lane reconstruction, which shall be performed in accordance with the term of the proposal and the village's 2025 consulting agreement with LKMA at a cost not to exceed $49,370, with the understanding that the proposal does not include costs for construction administration and inspection services, which shall be determined once plans are complete and construction bid is accepted. I make a motion.
Second. All in favor?
Discussion?
Oh, yeah.
So, if I'm reading this correctly, what they will deliver to us is a fully designed and engineered and permitted project ready for then someone else to construct and administer.
Correct.
Is that correct?
And it is also improving, including, sorry, you know, what do you call it? I'm sorry. I'm thinking, you know, a site plan. What do you --
Yeah.
Surveying, surveying.
Surveying.
So, it's also including surveying of the topography at that location.
Okay, thank you.
And Bill, is this then feeding off of the design by Perry Gioz?
Well, they're working together.
They're working together.
Yes.
And it --
One is doing the engineering work and one is doing more of the, you know, landscape design.
And I'm assuming at some point in Perry's work, there will -- the plan will be unveiled with opportunity for public input into perhaps some, you know, commentary about the plan.
Oh, absolutely. This is just to get a survey done so that they can actually do the contours of that area, engineer the road. And again, he is working, that's LKMA, sorry, is working with Perry Gio as the landscape architect to determine how best to do this project.
Okay, great.
So, they're working together.
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
I think you did already?
I did.
And I interrupted, sorry.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Whereas PSEG is initiating a project to install underground transmission lines on North Main Street, Willow Street, and North Sea Road within the Village of Southampton. And whereas in consideration of the village authorizing PSEG to perform such installation under and adjacent to village roads, PSEG has agreed to restore the village roads upon completion of the installation. And whereas PSEG will be responsible for the total cost, including materials and labor, of all necessary roadway restoration work in the affected areas, including the restoration of all pavement markings. And whereas this project, known as the roadway restoration project following PSEG transmission line installation on North Main Street, Willow Street, and North Sea Road, shall be completed in compliance with New York State MUTCD and Village Southampton Department of Public Works standards and shall be subject to inspection and approval by the Superintendent of Public Works. Now therefore be it resolved. The Board of Trustees authorizes the mayor to enter into a contract with PSEG for the roadway restoration project following PSEG transmission line installation on North Main Street, Willow Street, and North Sea Road in accordance with the foregoing and subject to the approval of the village attorney. I'll make the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And can I just ask that we ask them to do frankly, a better job than National Grid has done?
National Grid is not finished. They're not finished.
Well, but even the temporary patch -- no, I'm not saying on Hampton Road.
Yeah.
I'm saying on Hall C Neck.
Yeah.
The patching that was done there, there are four to eight-inch-deep potholes right in the tire lane, and it's a hazard, actually. I don't know if the chief recognizes this, but it's a, we're going to get sued for damages or get claims for busted tires. It's that bad. Anyway, I hope they do a better job in this project of putting it all back together.
Okay. So, we had a motion and a second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I think we voted.
Okay. Sorry.
Eleven, whereas upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of the Department of Public Works, it has been determined that additional funding is required within the village's paving budget line. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby approves and authorizes the following budget modification. Increase account A5112.21, permanent improvements paving by $5,000. Decrease account A5112.22, permanent improvements drainage by $5,000. I'll make that motion.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Whereas the Southampton Fire Department is organized for the safeguarding of life and property in the event of emergencies within the boundaries of the Village of Southampton and the Southampton Fire Protection District. And whereas the Southampton Fire Department also provides mutual aid when requested by other governmental agencies, and further promotes the teaching and practice of fire prevention and emergency care of the sick and injured. And whereas the Southampton Fire Department operates under a set of bylaws designed to serve as a detailed operating manual that governs the department's internal management and operations. Among other things, the bylaws establish the framework for the department's structure, define the roles and responsibilities of officers and members, and set rules for membership, participation requirements, meetings, voting, and decision-making. And whereas the bylaws have not been updated in many years despite the growth of both the department and the village. And whereas the department has recently reviewed and amended the bylaws, and the department has approved of same, now therefore be it resolved, the Village of Southampton Board of Trustees hereby approves and ratifies the adoption of the new bylaws for the Southampton Village Fire Department effective January 1, 2026. I make the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Can we just have some discussion? Are we, that's maybe the village attorney, are we supposed to, are we opining on the quality of these bylaw changes, or should, do we need to know what's in them? Or are we just blessing the fact that they've gone through a process and we acknowledge it? Is this a?
They were reviewed by Eileen, I know that.
Well, I reviewed them with them, and we worked together to make changes to them. But it was mostly, it was all there. They had special counsel, right?
Okay.
They had Brian Egan represent them, help them draft suggested changes. So, I didn't really comment on the substance of them.
Is there anything in your opinion that, go ahead, sorry.
I asked Ricky Fowler, because I saw it on the agenda, and I wasn't aware of what the bylaws were. And one of the things that it does do is establish tighter controls for the awarding of Low Sap credits for this, which needs to be done according to our auditors and everything else. So, I was happy to see that.
Yeah.
So, it's that kind of tightening up. They haven't done it in 20 or 30 years, I think you said.
The bylaws should have been part of the background for this meeting, right?
No, they're not in the package.
Oh, they're not?
No, I've not seen anything.
You have them.
I do. Do you have to print the topic right now?
Yeah, so that's part of my question. I haven't seen it, so I don't know what the change is.
I definitely submitted it, thinking it would be part of it.
So, they were, yeah, I know they were drafted by Brian Egan and then reviewed by you.
Right. Well, and voted on by the department.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, the department voted on this, so.
They have to pass it to us, though, just the way we confirm their chiefs in January.
Right.
We have to obviously confirm their bylaws once they've established.
Well, I want to go on the record. It sounds like this process had been well done. But if we're asked to vote on something, I just felt I was operating in a bit of a vacuum.
I agree with you, but I think we need to address that issue, why it didn't get into the background material here. So, it should have been for you. So, we'll make sure that happens.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Okay. Scott? We're going to ask you to do this one.
Whereas a village employee was involved in a motor vehicle accident resulting in a claim for damages totaling $140.95. And whereas while the claimant may have some comparable liability for the accident, the Village Board of Trustees believes it is in the public interest to settle this matter. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees authorizes the village administrator to execute any documents necessary to resolve the matter by payment to the claimant Rufus Meeker in the amount of $140.95.
All right.
I'll make the motion?
I'll second it. Any discussion? Do you want to say anything more, Scott?
No, it's just to be perfectly candid, it's an unfortunate incident between both parties. It's a matter of resolution. I think it's fair for all sides.
Okay. Do you have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? All right. Resolve, the Board of Trustees approves Sergeant Steven Zakowski and Police Officer Charles Noble to attend Defensive Tactics Instructor School from December 1 through December 12, 2025 in Pomona, New York. Registration, training, hotel accommodations, meals, and travel expenses are estimated to be $4,710. I will make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolve, the Board of Trustees approves Police Officer Kyle McGinnis and Police Officer Tiffany Lubold to attend social media and open source investigations training on December 15, 2025 in Eddie Stone, Pennsylvania. Registration, training, hotel accommodation, meals, and travel expenses are estimated to be $1,110.12. I will make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolve, the Board of Trustees approves First Assistant Chief Richard Fowler to attend Fire and Emergency Services Instructor 1 at the Orange County Fire Training Center from February 27, 2026 through March 8, 2026 in Hampton, New York. Registration, training, hotel accommodations, meals, and travel expenses are estimated at $1,445. I make the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolve, the Board of Trustees approves Andre Franklin Jr. as a probationary member to the Southampton Village Fire Department, Fire Police Co. Company Number 1, effective November 13, 2025. I make the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolve, the Board of Trustees approves Raphael Rokas as a probationary member to the Southampton Village Fire Department, Hook and Ladder Company 1, effective November 13, 2025. I make the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolve, the Board of Trustees approves Freddie Barretto as a probationary member to the Southampton Village Fire Department, Hose Company 1, effective November 13, 2025. I make the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolve, the Board of Trustees approves Frederick Schneider as a probationary member to the Southampton Village Fire Department, Hose Company 1, effective November 13, 2025. I make the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I would just like to say, I'm delighted to see that we have so many people joining our volunteer fire department. I think that's a good sign that we have a healthy fire department. Sorry, Ed?
Resolve, the Board of Trustees approves the request submitted by the Southampton Cultural Center to host our annual 2026 Summer Concerts in the Park and Shakespeare in the Park series at Agawam Park at 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. based on event schedule. I make the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolve, the Board of Trustees approves the save the date for the Ellen Herbenson Foundation to host its 31st Annual Ellen's Run on Sunday, August 16, 2026 at 6:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. to start and finish at the Southampton Intermediate School. I make the motion.
I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. Okay.
I'd like to make a walk-on motion for a resolution that I'd like to propose. And before doing so, if I can, I just read a statement that I prepared. As trustees, we are responsible under village law 4-412 for the management and oversight of village property, finances, and affairs. Part of that responsibility includes reviewing documents produced with public funds for official village purposes. In recent weeks, I have attempted to review the draft report in my capacity as a trustee and has not been available to me. These, there appears to be uncertainty among departments and boards about who has the authority to release it, and I want to be respectful of that uncertainty. That is precisely why this resolution is being proposed. It provides clear direction from the Board of Trustees so that the appropriate village offices may release the document without hesitation. This resolution also reflects the fact that village documents, especially reports funded with public money, are public records under the Freedom of Information Law, Public Officers' Law, Chapter 87. FOIL requires the disclosure of factual and statistical data in such reports, even when they are in draft form. Because this report contains maps, surveys, inventories, and other factual findings, it is subject to public review and certainly to trustee review. The Preservation Studios' report was also funded by the village grant appropriation approved by this board and is therefore a village record, not the record of any individual board. For these reasons, the board should take the single step of authorizing this release. This ensures transparency, supports our fiduciary obligations, and allows trustees to remain informed of our work undertaken in the village names and at its expense. I respectfully ask for the board's support so that the report can be made available through the proper channels in accordance with village law and FOIL. If I can distribute the, my proposed, and then I'll make a motion.
So, Ed, I don't understand why we're doing this during comments from board members.
It's not comments yet. It's before the comments.
Okay. But, I mean, the thing is, we have, our last meeting was three weeks ago. If you had a proposed resolution, you had it then.
And you didn't, you said, you cannot, you cannot present it because the village attorney was not there.
If you let me finish, Ed, I was getting there. In the last three weeks, you had the opportunity to speak to the village attorney about this. You had every opportunity to speak to me or other members of the board. I don't understand this tactic of coming in at the 11th hour with a half-baked resolution that the village attorney has not even reviewed and ask us to vote on it. That is not the way we conduct business in the village. If you have a specific resolution that you would like to propose, I would advise that you come forward a week maybe before the meeting, speak to the village attorney, and put it on the agenda the way we put all other, we had 19 resolutions tonight, all the way we do all other resolutions. This is some sort of a tactic of yours.
It's not a tactic.
Why are you doing this then?
We've communicated by email with the whole board.
Honestly, the phone also works, Ed, and you don't even ever call me.
We communicated by, and I also put on that communication the same resolution, so you had a chance to look at it on the email. I also, I also sent it to Kathy yesterday at 3:30.
Yesterday at 3:30?
That's right.
Yesterday at 3:30?
Which is.
You think that's appropriate?
Yes.
Excuse me, during the campaign, you said that resolutions should be put on the agenda and viewed by the public at least three days ahead of time. But you think it's okay for you to put something on at the last minute?
We do have last-minute resolutions.
Only when there are extenuating circumstances.
Well, I had to prepare it.
Okay. But the village attorney has not even reviewed this. She is our attorney.
She has reviewed it. I sent the email with the information.
Anyway, I just think this is not the way to properly conduct the business of the village. That's all I have to say.
I think it's important that a trustee should have the opportunity to propose and have a resolution put on the agenda. I did send it last night before, I mean, if you look at the suggested guidelines of the NICOM, it says by 4 o'clock. I did it by 3:30. It could have, it could have gotten on the agenda.
Ed, again, you seem to have forgotten what you talked about during the campaign when you said these things should be presented at least three days ahead of time to the public.
I'd like to be able to have a vote on it. You can vote against it. In the meantime, I can give you a copy.
Eileen, have you reviewed this resolution?
I just, I did see it last night when he sent it. I just wanted to say that he, the resolution suggests that the village planner and/or the village attorney and other members of the staff, it just sort of, I guess, authorizes us to release it. I don't have the document. It belongs to that independent board. I don't have it. I think the entire board would have to, if you want to fight with the Architectural Review Board, you'd have to take a vote and tell us to do that. But I do not have it. I don't think Alex has it, the planner, but it belongs to the ARB. So, I'm not sure what this resolution would.
I believe it belongs to the village.
Well, I understand your position, I know. But that.
Alex Wallach does have it. He told me he has it. More than a month ago, he told me.
I think he said it's in. I don't know that he's actually, he has it. I do not have it. I have not seen it as far, as far as I know. No one else has seen it. I don't think.
If you want to hand out these resolutions, it's fine. But I really just think this is, this is an inappropriate way to carry on the business of the village.
Did you ask the ARB for the report?
As a trustee, I don't have to ask. The ARB does not have. The ARB does not have purview on this. The village has purview on this, the Board of, the Board of Trustees.
But, Ed, if they have the report, why wouldn't you go to the chairman, Mark McIntyre, and ask him for a copy? Silence.
No, not silent.
You are silent.
No, not silent.
Didn't respond. Anyway...
I'm not silent.
So what are we doing here?
It was commissioned by the Village of Southampton, funded with the village grant appropriation that this board voted on and that village employees, including the senior village planner, are working on. That makes the report a village record, regardless of which board intends to use it. Under Village Law 4-412 and Public Officers' Law, Chapter 87.1B, the village clerk is the official custodian of village records, including consultant works produced and paid for by the village. The ARB chair does not have legal custody of this document and is not a record access officer. So I want to be clear, I have no issues speaking with the ARB chair, but directing me to the ARB is not the legal, legally proper process. Accordingly, I am again requesting access to the report through the proper custodial channel, which is the village clerk, subject to the oversight of this board. I simply would like to review our report produced with public funds for village purposes.
Okay, just so, for the record, again, the village clerk does not have the report. The ARB has the report...
But she can, she can obtain it.
Well, you can obtain it. Call them if you think it's that easy. She's a village employee. What authority does she have to demand a document from an independent board?
I have a resolution that will allow us to obtain the...
It doesn't allow anything.
Yes, it does. If it's passed by the board. You, yourself suggested that.
Okay.
So I would like to make a motion to read into the minutes a resolution that will allow us to obtain this report.
Does Mr. Simeoni have a second?
Do I have a second?
I'm going to second for the purpose of discussion. I'll second it. And I'm going to tick everyone off here. No one's going to like what I have to say. Alex Wallach does have this. He told me more than a month ago he does. He is a village employee, so it's not just in the hands of the ARB. He's not a member of the ARB. I know he advises him, but I'm not, I don't have a big dog in this fight. I wish that this could, I wish they'd completed their work already, but I know it takes time. And I wish we could hold off on this resolution until we move the authority for making any decision on a historic district to this board from the Board of Architecture Review and Historic Preservation, where all of our peer municipalities have it and, and where I think it belongs, in any municipality and certainly in ours. So I...
And I said we can, we can discuss that at the next work session, as well as put something on for the December meeting.
So I had a resolution also that I proposed for tonight. I'm not going to bring it up. It was drafted and submitted earlier than Ed's on that other issue. And frankly, you know, with all due respect, Bill, there are things that go on to our walk-on agendas that are not time urgent. They're not. And I don't understand what the criteria are for which ones that go on and which ones don't. You can go back and look at some of them, but there are some that we were doing as a courtesy, out of respect for other people, out of convenience, because we could do it. And it seems a little bit arbitrary to say in this case that it should have been done sooner, because we've, we have set a precedent of allowing it in other cases. The law allows it. It's a pretty common practice. So I don't agree with anyone in this, is the answer. I wouldn't take Ed's tactic, but I agree with his right to put it forward. That's why I seconded it and to, to ask us all to take a vote on it and see where we stand. But I also, I think the whole thing has not been handled or managed well, and I hope we do better going forward. That's my comment.
I'm sorry to disagree with you. I think it's a contrived issue. I think it's a contrived issue. You know, like the great philosopher Yogi Berra said, you can, I observe a lot by just watching. And I think it's a contrived issue. I think it's politically motivated to cause trouble. We appoint the ARB, as I told the young woman in the audience, and we have to respect them for what they do. And if we don't like them, then we should not appoint them. But they're entrusted with this responsibility right now, and I believe this resolution is politically motivated, and I don't get it. I just don't get it.
It is not. The only, the only precedent that I'm trying to apply here is that a trustee does have access to documents.
It's a draft report.
Even a, even a draft report. I checked that with NICOM. It is available to trustees. That's the only issue. If I had been able to see that report, there would have been no question here, there'd be no resolution. So I think to, to create a precedent where a trustee is simply asking to look over a report and is refused, that, that is a bad precedent, and the trustees should be able to do so. That's part of our responsibility to ourselves, to the board, and to the public.
It's a contrived issue.
It's not a contrived issue.
Nothing is happening with this.
Okay.
It doesn't matter. I just like to review it.
Could I just weigh in? My, my part of the discussion, I spoke with Ed about this. He called me and told me that he was looking to present this resolution. I said, I didn't think it was, I probably wouldn't support it. My reason being is that this board picks the people to be on, on our land use boards and on our ethics board, and once we pick them, they are independent. We can't fire them. We, we are not supposed to go way in with them about what we think they should do. That would be a violation. So for us to now have the appearance of saying, well, we want to see what you're, what you're looking at, I'm not sure if that is a great precedent. And I brought up the example to Ed, you know, recent, we had some issues with the ethics board, and a report was done about a serious ethical issue by an independent person. And that report was handled incredibly discreetly. It was finally, after it was finished, brought to us as trustees. We were not allowed to remove the report from the room. We had to read it and then give it back, all because of this issue of confidentiality and allowing the boards to do their work without interference from this board. So in my opinion, I think I'm going to see the finished report from the ARB when they've finished it. I'm confident that they will distribute it to us. I agree with Trustee Coburn that I would like to see this board be the board that then acts on the recommendation of the ARB to decide what to do with the findings of that report. But I'm confident that in due time, when the report is ready, the ARB will distribute it to me. And I don't think we need to get into getting them to show it to us before they're ready. So I would not, I would vote nay on, on Trustee Simeoni's request to pass this resolution.
That's fine. I want to see what the votes are, but the Board of Architecture Review and Historic Preservation operates in a quasi-judicial capacity, but its independence in decision-making does not exempt it from oversight or accountability to the village. The Board of, of Architecture Review was created by local law, Village Code, Chapter 65 enacted by the Board of Trustees. The trustees also appropriated the funds that allowed the BARHP to function, including stipends for board members, compensation for its attorney, and funding for this very survey. For that reason, trustees have every right to review the consultant's draft report. Doing so does not interfere with the Board of Architecture Review operations. It simply allows elected officials to stay informed about work performed in the village's name and at its expense. I am not trying to influence or tell the board what to do. I just like to see what's in the report. That's all. Very simple.
Okay. So, Ed, again, I don't understand why we're hearing all of this, you know, here at the end of the meeting, when, again, I think I met with you in my office, the last time I went with you was probably two weeks ago. You had, you already had this, because you brought this up at the last meeting. Why did you not raise this topic with me and ask me to discuss it with you?
We did discuss it. You said you wanted to talk to the ARB first.
And, and I just told you...
And you never got back to me on it.
No, that's not, not correct.
You never got back to me on it.
Not correct, not correct, Ed. And the fact...
You said November 4th, you speak to the, the chair of the ARB.
I did speak to him.
And I have not heard from you.
And you know what? I haven't heard from you either, Ed.
I haven't heard from you.
But this is not the way.
I move that we vote on Mr. Simeoni's motion.
Again, this is not the way to conduct village business. This is not the way to do it.
Well, I made a proposal, have a second. Do we have...
You have to take a vote, Bill.
Okay. What would you like to do? You're saying yes.
Just say all in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All against?
I'm abstaining. I'm not voting on this.
So we have two nays...
So the, the motion failed.
All right. Now, we'll go back to our regularly scheduled meeting, which is comments from board members. And, you know, we'll hear from Mr. Coburn.
Can I request to have others go first, maybe go closer? Please.
Okay. We'll go to Mr. Simeoni.
Simeoni. Well, let me read what the resolution would have said.
Oh, my goodness.
Whereas the Village of Southampton retained Preservation Studios to prepare an intensive legal historic district review, survey. The survey, in order to assist an official village board in evaluating potential historic district designations. And whereas the preparation of this survey was funded in whole or in part through a public grant funds that were duly appropriated by the Village Board of Trustees. And whereas the Board of Trustees has a statutory responsibility under New York Village Law 4-412 to manage the property, finances, and affairs of the village, which may include review and oversight of consultant work products prepared at village expense. And whereas trustees must be able to liaise with village employees, departments, and boards in order to remain informed about projects undertaken in the village's name and to carry out their fiduciary and policy responsibilities. And whereas the village planner is a village employee directly involved in supervising, coordinating, or reviewing the work product associated with the survey. And whereas the Board of Architecture Review and Historic Preservation, while operating in a quasi-judicial, judicial capacity, was established by Village Code and operates with funding appropriate annually by the Board of Trustees. And whereas a draft survey contains factual data, research findings, and information relevant to village policy and planning, and its review by trustees does not interfere with the Board of Architecture Review independent decision-making. And whereas ensuring that trustees have access to consultant work products enhances transparency, accountability, and informed governance in the best interests of village residents. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby requests and authorizes the village planner, the Board of Architecture Review and Historic Preservation, and any village department or consultant in possession of the draft Preservation Studios' intensive-level historic district survey to release the draft survey to the Board of Trustees for internal review. And be it further resolved that the draft survey shall be treated as an internal working document pending its final acceptance by the Board of Architecture Review, but shall nonetheless be made available to all trustees in their official capacity. That's my comment.
Okay. We'll go to Trustee Stevenson.
Last Tuesday was Veterans Day, and it was a bitterly cold day for November in Southampton. We gathered at the Presbyterian Church parking lot, and I had a very strange feeling as I walked down Main Street. The band was playing behind, and the people were waving flags, and somewhere in my imagination, I suddenly was transported, if I was an 18-year-old kid, and had volunteered or been drafted, and was heading down to, to get sworn in and go to basic training and end up someplace with bullets flying at me. And I thought, how crazy young people are to think that this was, would be great and wonderful and glorious. And then, what happens as you live your life is you find out that, that wars are really terrible things. And as I, I walked in and took my seat, and it was really cold, and I thought, I can't complain about this because I'm sitting here in my overcoat. And again, these young kids would be out there with ordinance coming at them, and it would be really cold or really hot or really raining, and I got to sit here for an hour. So, and then, this wonderful lady, who I wrote down her name, and I forgot, Joan Fury, got up, and it basically seconded everything that was in my brain, because she had been a 22-year-old nurse, six months out of nursing school, and volunteered to go to Vietnam and ended up, basically, after a few weeks of basic training in the ICU in Plaquemire, doing surgery on poor people, four young men and women who had been horribly injured, defending our country and fighting, and fighting for the nation. And she gave a very wonderful speech, and it was very moving. And I just want to say, what that ceremony did, it respects all of our veterans, the ones who came back, and especially those ones who did not. After it was over, there, there was a gathering in Veterans Hall, and I wanted to give a special shout-out to Lisa McWilliams, who sort of heads up all the group of people who make, who made the veterans' events and the meals, and getting the furniture, and getting the food, and getting everything cleaned up, and all the work they do to help us respect and, and show a debt of gratitude to the veterans who, who have served our country. So shout-out to her and everyone who helped her in that noble task. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Roy. Trustee Zanotti.
Thank you, Mayor. On Saturday, November 22nd, from 2:00 to 3:30 at the Southampton Cultural Center, please join the Village Environmental and Sustainability Committee chaired by Sheila Pfeiffer, the New York Center for Clean Water Technology headed by Dr. Chris Gobler, and the Lake Agawam Conservancy for a vital meeting on low-nitrogen septic upgrades. Over 3,000 village properties contaminate our groundwater through nitrogen, and Dr. Gobler will explain how this nitrogen fuels harmful algae blooms. You can learn how to access up to $60,000 in tax-free grant funding. Tom Varley from Dr. Gobler's Institute will detail the simple application process. You can look and see from the suppliers, Fuji Clean and Hydro Action, the units will be displayed right in front of the Cultural Center. And there will be a panel, including Design Engineer David Rhodes, Tri-State Serving and Peter Topping, the Peconic Bay Keeper moderated by Suffolk County legislator Ann Welker, to discuss and answer all your questions. So it's basically getting free one-on-one assistance at the meeting to complete and submit your grant application immediately. This is an important thing. It's a win-win for individuals and certainly for our water bodies. The, as I stated earlier, the traffic restriping commenced yesterday, and we expect the pilot to be permanentized on November 17th, next Monday, and we look forward to the benefits that that, we hope, will bring the village, even in the short term. Trustee Coburn. Veterans Day was incredibly touching. Joan Fury gave an incredible speech. That, that was the cloud hanging over my head when I was draft age, and listening to it was very, very, very touching, along with the Veterans Appreciation Dinner that the mayor and I attended, and Trustee Simeoni on the 29th at the Southampton High School. And lastly, I attended on the 2nd of November, the Southampton Artists fundraiser at the Cultural Center for the Heart of the Hamptons. And I bought a wonderful photograph and was happy to be contributing to the Heart of the Hamptons and the Southampton Artists Association. And thank you, and good night.
Okay. Trustee Coburn.
Sure. Thanks. When I decided to run for trustee last spring, I did so because I believe strongly, based on regular conversations with dozens of friends and other residents, and my own experience, that I could bring an independent mind to help the village do certain things better, perhaps, better processed, better shared understanding, better exploration of available alternatives, and better confidence among residents that their village was looking out for their interests. This was not meant or framed as a criticism. I made it clear that my approach was not going to feature pitchforks and torches, but rather research, dialogue, brainstorming, and imagination, and a commitment to professional collaboration and personal respect. That message seemed to resonate with voters, who gave me the most votes of any candidate. This is not electioneering, but it's true. It seemed to resonate. I don't discuss that much, because for me, it's not a matter of personal pride. It was rather a confirmation that the message of independent thinking matched a desire among residents. In the past four months, I've worked very hard and diligently to fulfill my promise to think independently and equally to maintain my commitment to collaboration and respect. I have developed or strengthened my relationships with my fellow board members and communicate I have developed or strengthened my relationships with my fellow board members and communicate with each of them regularly on both specific topics and general directions. In those conversations, I try to at least listen as much as I speak, and I want to thank my fellow board members for the time and knowledge that they've given me. But having passed the milestone of one-sixth of my term, I'm frustrated that my efforts have not yielded more results, and that the independent fact-based ideas I've shared with colleagues have not moved the needle much in terms of both process and outcomes. Mostly, I'm frustrated that some of the same habits that led to unnecessary and avoidable confusion or even disappointment among residents, from infrastructure surprises to a lack of reportable progress on projects like a sewer, or uncertainty on important topics like workforce housing, the algae harvest, or even tree legislation. Residents may be surprised to know that even for trustees, even for me, there's not a clearinghouse of information or even clarity necessarily about what will be on our agenda or why. I've made several modest but important, entirely constructive requests to place items on our agenda, and none have been included. I've requested that the village follow its own law with respect to things like ARB review of landscaping plans for village properties in the historic district, that we slow certain actions down to provide more time for public review and input, provide more information and context on the potential timing and impacts of installing a sewer, and even suggested that we add an open-topic segment to our meetings where we can have more casual, open-ended discussions on these topics and more, without the shadow of a specific option or resolution hanging over our heads. To date, all of these ideas have basically been received with polite expressions of intention to incorporate them in some form, but ultimately with a lack of follow-through, that whether intentional or unintentional or deliberate, has effectively killed them behind the scenes. It shouldn't be the case that I should have, even once, have to remind other officials that landscaping projects known to them in the historic district require ARB review. But I've had to do it twice. What's been more disappointing is the very clear feedback I've received that by doing my duty and helping them to do theirs, I'm somehow the skunk at the picnic and shouldn't meddle or upset the apple cart. It's not an appropriate reaction to a gentle reminder that we need to faithfully execute and abide by our own laws. And it's an insult to the very purpose of those laws, which is to ensure public review and input. This is too bad, because in addition to residents telling me they still expect progress on these matters, I've also heard from a number of village employees who also believe that the process of how issues arise or discussed and presented to the public for review and input seems in need of improvement. I've personally attended nearly 200 municipal board meetings over the past 30 years on the East End, including more than 100 in Sag Harbor, Shelter Island, and East Hampton, presenting at most of those. And that's given me the opportunity to observe how they work. And sadly, I agree with the residents and employees that they're on to something. Don't get me wrong, I'm very proud of our village, and I have great respect for our board and our village, and much of what we do is superior to our neighbors, in my opinion. But on this topic of fulsome, transparent, imaginative, and respectful dialogue by and among the board, among its members, and with the public, we fall noticeably short, in my experience, of our neighbors. I'll take my share of responsibility for those shortcomings for the time I've been here, and just say we need to do better, and we can. I'm still committed to making that happen and to working with anyone on this board or in the community to make progress. Tonight, I'm reiterating my request for more open-ended discussion at our future meetings, particularly the working session. I'm politely and constructively requesting more regular briefings on sewer, workforce housing options, and other key topics. And I'm giving notice that I will raise my hand more often in these meetings to seek the clarifications and dive into certain details that I know the public wants and deserves. My tone won't get sharper, my rhetoric won't get cheaper, and my mind will remain open. But I'll be more persistent and insistent that we conduct ourselves in all matters, especially in these important public settings, in a manner more consistent with the oath we all took to faithfully execute the laws and to fulfill our roles as stewards, fiduciaries, and trustees of the public interest. And I thank you for listening.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Coburn. I would just like to add, though, that I did vacate my seat on the Sewer Committee and put Trustee Coburn in that position. So he has been at all of the sewer meetings since he became a trustee. I have not participated in any of those meetings. So I'm not sure how, you know, you're not aware of what's going on with the Sewer Committee. Anyway-
I'm aware of what's going on. That's not what I said. I'm aware of what's going on. You misheard me.
Okay, okay. All right. I did, yeah. So I'd like to start on happier things in the village. We had the pet parade on October 25th, which was a huge turnout, and I really want to thank Patty Hurley of Little Lucy's on Jobbs Lane for the effort that she puts into that year after year on her own. It brings so much joy to people in the village. It brings people into Lake Agawam Park, and it's really a fantastic outpouring of goodwill and good cheer in the heart of the village, all thanks to, again, a store owner who takes this all on herself and has done this for, I believe, over 20 years. So it's very, very impressive. I did attend the Patriots Club Dinner at the Southampton High School with Trustee Simeoni and Trustee Zananti. We presented some proclamations to a few of the veterans that were being honored. One of them unfortunately had to be done posthumously, because he had died a short time before the dinner. But we nevertheless made the proclamation to his kin, and they were very glad to be there. Veterans Day, again, was outstanding this year. I think the cold added to it, because it showed the commitment to so many village residents and others of coming down and standing in Agawam Park in freezing cold, snow flurries, to listen to a nurse from the Vietnam era speak about her experience. I was completely engaged in what she was saying while we were sitting there, and I know it meant a lot to her that so many people stood in the cold to listen to her speak about her experience. I thought it was outstanding. And that's Southampton at its best, as Trustee Stevenson alluded to in his closing remarks. Also, the Southampton Artists, as Trustee Zananti said, had a fundraiser for the Heart of the Hamptons. Again, another charity that really is critical. And again, I appreciate all those who bought some of the works of art, all the works of art for sale by the Southampton Artists Group. And again, the money all went to the Heart of the Hamptons, which was really outstanding. And I do want to remind everyone that we have the polar bear plunge coming up in December, and hopefully we'll see a lot of you down at Cooper's Beach. Finally, this Saturday, the 15th of November, I will be at the Red Horse Ribbon Cutting. Red Horse is opening where Schmitz operated for many years, and I've been invited to cut the ribbon to officially open that new store in our village at 11 o'clock on Saturday. On Sunday, I will be traveling, actually, no, sorry, also on Saturday, later that day, I will be traveling to Riverhead with Chief Polis Walker to attend the NAACP luncheon being held in Riverhead. And I was honored to be invited and glad I can join Chief Polis Walker at that event. So we have been planting a lot of new trees in this village. Perhaps people saw that we actually planted 10 ginkgo trees on Jagger Lane outside of the Stop and Shop. The trees there were in terrible condition. In fact, one of them, when they cut it down, it was completely hollowed through the bottom. You could see all the way to the roots and the dirt. And so it was necessary to remove those trees, but I'm glad that we were able to replant them with 10. Actually, we placed more trees than we took down. 10 ginkgo trees, which are going to be a great yellow color in the fall. And then on Main Street, we planted red maples, again, in the locations where we had some dead and dying trees. And I'm sorry we had to take those down, but again, there's no point in having a dead tree, which could blow down in a windstorm that we've been seeing recently. But again, the red maples will look fantastic, and especially next year in the fall, I hope we have a blaze of red on Main Street. Finally, they're planting Zelkova trees. I think they completed that today on Jobbs Lane, again, where we had some dead and dying trees. Those were removed and planted. We also planted some additional trees in Agawam Park. And I'm happy to report that after my time, short time as being mayor of this village, we have planted 600 trees approximately in this village. I think that's more than has ever been planted in three years. So I'm very proud of that accomplishment for the village today and for the village in the future, so that people can see what we did here in 2025, when they look up at a large maple tree on Main Street 25 years from now and wonder who maybe was the person that thought of planting that. Finally, there's an initiative I would like to do, and I've spoken to an app developer, and that is creating an app for your phone that would be actually a self-guided walking tour of the village. And it would include on it specific sites. So of course, the Halsey House would be included, the Southampton Cultural Center, the Southampton Arts Center, the First Presbyterian Church, which is the oldest Presbyterian congregation in the United States, the Peter Marino Foundation. Anyway, the concept would be that you have an app that visitors and residents alike can put on their phone and then be guided through the village, much the way Boston has their Freedom Trail. We would guide people through the village to look at the interesting sites that we have here, the World War I Memorial, again, Veterans Hall. There's so much we have to be proud of in this village, and I think having a guided walking tour that someone can take when they come to visit our village and see the sites and learn a little bit of the history of the village would be really a wonderful thing. I thought of this, I've been thinking about this for some time, but it really hit home last summer when I met a German tourist on Main Street, right outside of Village Hall, and he said, "Well, do you have a map? Where can I find the different things to look at here in this village?" And I had to say, "I'm sorry, we really, I think maybe the Chamber of Commerce has a map, but we don't actually have a map here that points out all of the points of interest in our village, and we should be proud of the points of interest in this village." So I am going to be developing this, and I'm going to look to the board for some financing for developing this app, but I think it will be something that is well worth the effort and the money for residents and visitors to our village alike. And with that, I will say good night, and I think we're going to close this meeting, but we're going to then have some legal advice from our attorney. But I'm told we can close the meeting and don't have to come back-
Yeah, we can have a closed session for legal advice.
Okay. So we're going to have a closed session for legal advice, but I will make a motion to close this meeting of the village Board of Trustees. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?